Councillors, please stand. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, song, dance, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay respect to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness and in caring for one another and this country. Please be seated, I declare the meeting open. councillor Hutton, do we have any apologies?
Yes Chair, Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Owen will be absent today and I move that she be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Jenkinson that councillor Owen be granted a leave of absence for today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Confirmation in minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,727th meeting, held on Tuesday the 14th of November 2023, be received, taken as read and adopted and confirmed.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Jenkinson that the meetings of the 4,727th meeting of council, held on the 14th of November 2023, be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. I'd like to call on Mr Ben Cannon, who will address the chamber on Voice for Victims. Thank you, Mr Cannon, you can either stand or be seated.
Okay.
And once the microphone has started, you have five minutes to address the chamber.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I don't know the formalities of this, but I will try. Thank you Chairman, thank you Lord Mayor and thank you council members. All right, we're off to a good start. Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to tell you today, an opportunity that I didn't think two and a half years ago I would be standing before you asking for your help. And I ask your help as what I see here before me is a group of leaders in the room that have the ability, if they choose to find a cause and it's more important or passionate enough about that they can, you know, lean into and make sure that, you know, it comes to an end. Because my cause is this, a little over August in 2021, I was woken by my dogs, and I know I've got five minutes, I'll try and make sure I keep this brief. I was woken by my dogs at a bar that I hadn't heard them do before and I ran to the kitchen thinking I'd be confronting a couple of people. In that moment, I heard my neighbours screaming and in that split second, I ran out the front door to my neighbours Tod I and Rachel Kefu and I was confronted with a scene where, you know, six or seven people were stabbed multiple times, two or three went to the point where they, their stabs were to the point the blood loss were life threatening. One almost lost her arm from a machete swipe and I tore my medial ligament, rolling around in blood, wrestling with one of these people for about 10 minutes before the police got there. It's certainly not the 3am wake up call that anyone wants, but what it has done in me since then is it's done a range of things. One is it took a while to heal. Trauma is a really interesting thing that I'd never really experienced to that level. And I still to this day, I smell blood. I smell the guy that I caught. And it's just something that they tell me, over time, you know, your body, your brain will learn how to manage it. But one of our initial questions as a community group, our two families, was why? You know, why us? You know, why our street? Why our families? Why? And the second question was, why and how does a 14, 15, 16 year old get to a point that they feel so begrudged on society that at 2am the best thing they can do is enter my neighbour's home and cause an enormous amount of carnage and conflict inside of, you know, 10, 20 minutes? So those two questions haunted me. I took time to, you know, the first few days were crazy. Media, as you would know, you know, when they get a hot topic and we were that. The incident happened about 3 in the morning, they were on the curb of the park across the road from our house from 4:15, setting up spotlights. Sunrise was there for two and a half weeks, every day, you know. And these are things that, you know, yesterday, I was sitting on my mate's property, enjoying life and I remember saying to my wife, going to bed, this has been a great weekend, looking forward to the week and since then, we've been very different people. So there's things that you sort of get thrown into. I then took time to heal, we've taken time to sort of heal as people and then what's come from that is this energy, that something has to change, something has to be done better. Because the situation that 14, 15, 16, and I say allegedly all these things, because allegedly is a word that the system uses, but as victims, you know that it happened. It's not allegedly, it's real. You sleep with it, you smell it, you feel it. So allegedly, this happened as the system would tell us. And we'd asked the question, how do 14 year olds get in this situation? The other hole we fell in was as a victim. You would know this, I didn't, but when you go to court, you're not the person that's taking on the criminal, it's the state. You're actually a witness of your own crime, which as a victim is a really, really, really painful place to go, that you actually don't even have an identity inside the system. You know, like the system doesn't even care about you as a, as a person, as a survivor. So we created this thing called Voice for Victims and I know I've got a minute to go. We created this thing called Voice for Victims. I ask you as leaders here today to do one thing, consider your community and how we can make a difference. What I do know is that order has lost its way and you as leaders are ones that are getting blamed. It's a state issue, but people don't understand politics, all they'd go for is, you know, who are the leaders in my community? Now me as a real estate agent, strangely enough, I feel like I've taken a lot from my community over the years and this is my opportunity, as it were, to give back. It's also something that's dear to my heart. I don't want to see 14 year olds fall through so many cracks that they can't get picked up somewhere to get their life on track, that they don't end up in my neighbour's lounge room. So I thank you all for your time. Voice for Victims is our cause and through my passion and my, we are changing things and we will continue to. So if there is something in the future you could help me with, I'd welcome the opportunity to talk.
Thank you, Mr Cannon. Can I call on councillor Howard to respond, please?
Well, thank you, Mr Chair and Ben, thank you so much for sharing that, because I think that's the importance of today, is for you to share your lived experience and many of us in this room talk to people who have those lived experiences, far more than we should, far more. You know, it is a message that really must be heard and I think the work that you are doing to get that message out there is just so important. So thank you and thank you to Voice for Victims, because I know that I've been involved myself with victims of crime and also Crime Stoppers over the, over many, many years and I know the good work that they do and I also know how important it is that people stick together and that they, that they bring those messages to the public. So thank you for what you do. We know that Queenslanders are more likely to be crime victims than any other Australians with the number of robbery, theft, break in and stolen car victims growing by 16% in just one year. And we know that Queenslanders are twice as likely than residents in New South Wales to be robbed or have their homes broken into and nearly three times as likely to have their cars stolen. So like you've said on many occasions, crime is not a new issue, but it has never been as bad. And figures show that close to 200,000 Queenslanders became victims of theft, robbery and break ins last year. And as you know all too well, these statistics are far more than just a statistic and each event that contributes to them, to these statistics, doesn't represent one robbery or one theft. What you can't see is what you've described, the behind the scenes of those particular events. 195,000 cases of families, communities and neighbourhoods who have been permanently and irrevocably impacted by the atrocious experiences they've had to endure. As you, your family and the neighbourhood knows all too well with the horrific break in of the Kefu family household when you heroically came to their aid and we thank you sincerely for that. We are doing everything possible within our power as a council to help out, to keep our communities safe. We're proud to be long time supporters of Crime Stoppers, having provided annual funding for 15 years now to support the important work that they do. And this is just one example of what we do as a council. But as you've said, every level of government needs to work together to tackle the crime crisis and there is only so much that we can do as a local council, but Queenslanders do deserve real solutions. And until we create consequences for actions and, you know, certainly break the cycle of crime and I think that's something that we're all passionately involved in doing. So I thank you once again for taking the time to address the chamber today and to thank you for all the time and effort that you put into representing and standing up for Voices for Victims. And this may be the first time that you've addressed this chamber, but it's not the first time that I've heard you speak in the public and I'd just like you to know that on behalf of everyone in this chamber, we truly appreciate you continuing to do that. We know that takes a huge personal toll on you and your family and, but it is so important because you have become the face of that and it's something that we truly appreciate and which we really want to say to you, thank you. We will do everything that we can, Queenslanders do deserve to be safe and all that does need to change and we know all of the work that you are doing is just so appreciated by everyone in this chamber. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Howard. Councillors, we move on to question time, item four on our agenda. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any standing committee? Councillor Hutton?
Thank you Chair. My question is to Chair of Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee, councillor Adams. Councillor Adams, the Shreda Council's plan to create Brisbane's most sustainable community was given the green light by the Queensland Government. Can you please update the chamber on the latest steps to make this vision permanent?
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair and thank you councillor Hutton for the question, because I did hear councillor Cassidy last week saying, where is it? What's happening? What's going on? And with the TLPI now in place, we are getting on with the job of starting the formal amendment process to map out the longer term planning for this area. And that was always the intention under this two phase process. The TLPI gave immediate effect to planning changes that will facilitate more housing faster, while the long term planning, including full community consultation, takes place over the next couple of years. But not only that, it will also safeguard the infrastructure that is needed for this growing community and make sure the community gets more benefit out of these new buildings to create a greener and more sustainable neighbourhood. Yesterday, Cabinet took the step and approved the submission to start the amendment process and to start working with the state to set the framework for a streamlined amendment process. Because the fact of the matter is that there's no process in place for streamlined amendments as yet. As I mentioned, calls from the other side of chamber to abandon the TLPI and get on the fast track amendment were simply null and void because we don't have that process yet. But we thank the deputy premier for acknowledging that and for doing the right thing by introducing the TLPI immediately. Amendments to city plan can actually take anywhere between two to four years on average, sometimes longer. We are required to step through the state government statutory amendment pathway and through various full council approval processes, which are worked through and around sitting periods and then through full community consultation and then review periods. So more often than not, we do see a lot of holdups, particularly through the state, two state interest checks that need to be gone through. So at the moment, under statutory regulation, the minister has 60 business days, that's the KPI, to respond to the first state interest review and 40 for the second review. But I'm not sure if these KPIs have actually ever been met. I do know that more often than not, they are blown out by more than double those days when it comes to state interest checks. And it seems to be pretty standard when it comes to the track record of Labour meeting their own KPIs. So we see in the federal government, a 90 days infrastructure review, Lord Mayor, actually turns into 200, 200 plus as well. But I can tell you, the amendment package time reviews are even worse. Amendment package K was on hold for more than 200 business days, amendment L over 150 days. And Nathan Salisbury Maruka neighbourhood plan, which I see was discussed in committee this morning, similar story. It was submitted in December last year to the state for their first review and we just got it back a year later. So this is a serious problem and it's not just for Brisbane, but for every local government right now, that is trying to keep up with the pace of growth and the demand for new housing, but making sure that we're consulting with the community as well. Things move so quickly on the ground and delays in making the amendments when we send them up to the other end are only adding to the pressure. So we are taking the first steps right now with the state on what a tailored amendment process will look like, how we might streamline some of those processes and reduce the time required to complete the state government requirements. And the Corilpa Sustainable Growth Precinct will be the first test case, creating a model that can be replicated for precinct planning across the city for urban and suburban renewal projects. And that's what we need to be doing, looking for ways to unlock housing and supply pipelines in an agile and targeted way. We know the updated South East Queensland regional plan is expected to drop in the coming months. We know we will have higher target, say it again, higher housing targets that need to be met under this regional plan. So planning needs to change and legislative reforms need to be made to ensure the system is working as efficiently as possible. That's both within council and with state under the Planning Act. Yet all we do see from the other side of the chamber with the Green Labour Coalition of Chaos is new taxes on housing, opposition to new homes, high rates if you leak your rooms vacant. It is more stick and a less carrot approach. The Labour Greens' agenda is a massive threat to Brisbane's future and will come at a cost to every Brisbane household. It's simply a risk we can't afford. But I look forward to bringing this amendment through next week and getting on with the work to make sure that we can create new housing in Brisbane. And I hope with the work that is done through councillor Allen's area as well and with the state government, as I said, with deputy premier Miles, who has definitely said he's keen on getting this looked at, that we can see a faster, more efficient, with full community consultation process to get the housing that we need now and well and truly into the future in Brisbane.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Further questions? Councillor Collier?
Thanks Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, dozens of workers who have been doing basic council work, including road resurfacing, filling potholes and fixing footpaths, have been told their last day with council will be the 1st of December. Some of these workers have been doing council work for years and years. Do you still think sacking people doing basic council work three weeks before Christmas is sensible?
Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Well, certainly we believe in sensible savings to keep pressure down on rates, because in the situation that all three levels of government, households and business are in, there's really only the option of reducing expenditure or increasing rates and taxes. And we made it clear repeatedly that the second option is one that we want to avoid. And so reducing expenditure in a sensible manner is the right thing to do, it's the responsible thing to do. Now, we know that the Labour Green Coalition of Chaos, sorry, Krista? The Green Labour Coalition of Chaos opposes any kind of savings initiatives because they support higher taxes. And in fact, the first few policies they've released, all involve higher taxes and higher rates. They are a big taxing, big spending coalition. And that will be a coalition of chaos, because it will mean the people of Brisbane will pay more. So it's really clear, it couldn't be more clear. It couldn't be more clear. There is a choice here between an administration who continues to deliver more than ever before suburbs of Brisbane, to build more infrastructure than ever before while keeping rates low and in fact this year, half the rate of inflation. On the other side of the coin, you've got the big taxing, big spending, Green Labour Coalition of Chaos, which will drive up rates, which doesn't mind if money is wasted. Are they quite happy to waste money left, right and centre?
Just one moment, Lord Mayor. Point of order councillor Cassidy?
As far as I was aware, question time was an opportunity for the Lord Mayor to answer questions, not make speeches. So on relevance, the question was whether the Lord Mayor thought sacking staff at Christmas time was sensible.
As you know councillor Cassidy, the Lord Mayor has five minutes to answer his question. Lord Mayor?
I understand why councillor Cassidy is very sensitive about this and he should rightfully be sensitive, because him and his Coalition of Chaos have been exposed for the high taxing opposition that they are. And they want to be a high taxing administration. They want to put up rates and charges and they will show no restraint when it comes to spending. At a time when international agencies are warning that there needs to be restraint when it comes to spending, at a time when households are exercising restraint when it comes to spending, the Green Labour Coalition of Chaos wants to spend like drunken sailors. And that will just put costs onto rate pays.
Point of order councillor Cassidy?
On relevance, the question was whether the Lord Mayor thought sacking staff at Christmas time was sensible. I ask you to bring him back to the question.
Noted, thank you. Lord Mayor? I will draw you back to the premise of the question, please.
Thank you. The question is based on inaccurate information, because permanent council staff are not impacted nor have anything to be afraid of. The only thing they should be afraid of is Labour misinformation. And we know that there's plenty of that going around at the moment. But the reality is, permanent council staff have nothing to fear. They have nothing to fear. And so we've made that very clear, nothing's changed and we stand by that commitment to our staff. Our permanent staff do a fantastic job. Our needs when it comes to contractors and-
Just one moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Collier? Quiet, please, during question time. Lord Mayor?
Our needs when it comes to contractors and casual or agency staff change from time to time. They change based on our needs and requirements and based on the needs and requirements of the council organisation. But if you are employed by an agency, let me be very, very clear about this, this is how misleading these people are. If you are unemployed by an agency, council can't remove you from your employment, because you're employed by someone else. So it's fundamentally dishonest to suggest that agency staff are being sacked. They are not being sacked because we do not employ them.
Lord Mayor, just one moment. Councillor Johnson, do not enter into this, please. Councillor Cassidy, there's no calling out during question time. Councillor Griffiths, I know you didn't call out. But laughing loudly and rolling back in the chair doesn't help. No, no, yeah, hang on. Lord Mayor?
As I was correctly pointing out, if someone is employed by another organisation, we don't have the authority to interfere with their employment. We can simply adjust the amount of hours that we issue that third party employer, which we do, which we do, and which we've made very clear.
Councillor Cassidy?
And so it's surprising that people that were born and bred-
Councillor Cassidy? Lord Mayor?
Thank you. It's surprising that people were born and bred in the union movement, like the people to my right, don't understand the basic difference between people who are employed by council and people who are employed by someone else.
Councillor Murphy?
I think councillor Murphy's correct, they do. They're just deliberately misrepresenting the facts here. Our needs will change from year to year, the number of contractors or agency staff change from year to year, that is an ongoing process and we adjust our requirements based on need. And in fact, what we do is we issue a, is we issue, we get issued an invoice by those third party providers, the agencies, for the number of hours that are provided and we pay that invoice diligently. But we do not have a direct relationship with those agency staff, they are employed by someone else. This is a basic, this is a basic fact of employment. And just like up the road-
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Chair?
Oh, councillor Adaman, my apologies.
No, it's all good. Thank you Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Last week, the federal government gave up on tackling travel, traffic congestion for Kenmore residents, leaving them with a bike only solution proposed by the state government. Can you please advise the chamber what you think it will take for residents in my ward, the Poole and Bar ward, to get their fair share from the state and federal government when it comes to dealing with traffic congestion?
Just one moment councillor Wines. Was that you councillor Strum? You should be excused, thank you. Councillor Wines, you've got the call.
Thanks, Mr Chair and can I-
Councillor Marks?
Can I thank councillor Adaman for the question? And the first thing that they should do is return councillor Adaman and people like him who are committed to fighting traffic congestion and making the way of life for people in the western suburbs even better. So what, what the people of western suburbs need to do is get around people who get around them. The, the fact is that this federal government has turned their back on the western suburbs, in particular councillor Adaman's community. The federal member for Ryan has long been hostile to people west of the Kenmore roundabout. This is but one more iteration of that, one more demonstration of how she does not care about the people of Kenmore, Kenmore Hills, Brookfield, Poole and Bar and beyond. It is a car based community because of the lifestyle that they choose to live, a choice that they make about how they choose to live. Now, what they should do is get themselves a new state government and a new federal member. That's, that's two things that they should do, because those two entities are hostile to that community. If anybody were to travel, if anyone in this room were to travel into that community, into councillor Adaman's community, and you ask them, what is the biggest concern you have? They would say the traffic on Mogul Road. They don't say traffic in general, they say traffic on Mogul Road. And now, that's when I have to take a moment and councillor Adaman has rightly noted that there are two sections of Mogul Road. There is the council controlled section from roughly BBC out to the freeway and then from the freeway out until, freeway west, which is controlled by the state government. Now, if you are in the state government controlled portion of Mogul Road, you get to enjoy traffic at the roundabout. That is something that is, will be part of your life for an indefinite period now because of the federal government's decision to turn their back on that community. This is what the state government and federal government partnership in the western suburbs looks like this. However, if you were to get a council and federal government partnership to battle a roundabout removal in the western suburbs, ours would look something like this. A massive project, removing that intersection, addressing congestion in all three directions. We are deep into the project and this will be delivered next year. So what do you get? Well, if you deal with the state, you get, you get nothing. And if you deal with us, you get a multi hundred million dollar project that makes your way of life better. So the, the things that you should do if you, if you were to answer councillor Adaman's question, you should find a group of people who want to make this roundabout, the Kenmore Road roundabout, look like the Indrapili roundabout. That is the thing you should do. And you should back a group of people who are committed to making projects happen. That's, there was an interesting comment I heard from a voice in the room that said, what do the Greens think about it? Well, the Greens, I assume, love it. The 12 people who are able to, who have the physical capacity to ride a bike from Bell Bowery to St Lucia will love this. But everyone else who lives in Bell Bowery is going to have to be stuck in traffic, you know.
Councillor Messi?
But once again, I mean, it just, it just shows how out of touch the member for Ryan is from her own community, that she was gleeful that this project was rejected by the federal government. The minister Bailey, in his feeble efforts to try and provide some sort of bikeway solution, has once again failed to deliver for any community, noting that his entire programme for the state of Queensland is less than our programme in Brisbane city. And this is but one example. So what does it mean? Look, I will say something nice about the federal government. The projects where they were required to partner with us survived their razor gang. The projects where they were with the state and where they required the Green Party to defend the way of life of normal people, they've turned their back on them. And that's really what this is about. It's, it's, you know, you have to ask yourself some fundamental questions. Why does the Labour Party hate people in the western suburbs? Why does the Green Party hate normal people and people who are just trying to live a normal life and improve their quality of life? They're, these are, these are fair questions. Why, why do these two organisations have such hostility to these- Why, why do these two organisations have such hostility to these groups of people? Just, and, but that's why the Liberal National Party generally, and Team Shriner in particular, will back up councillor Adam and the people of the western suburbs, will deliver, as you can see with the Indrapili roundabout removal project, and will continue to deliver for Mogul Road and all members of both the western suburbs and all of Brisbane over the coming years.
Thank you, councillor Wines. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, your deputy councillor Adams said that your LMP council was sacking people because they didn't have any work to do. But now we've figured out it's the other way around, listening to the answer to your question just now. So after you announced your sacking spree, council projects and basic maintenance has been wound back. So less work is being done because you are sacking people, not the other way around, Lord Mayor. So out in the suburbs, people are paying more and getting less, staff are being sacked at Christmas time, and basic council work is now being cut. How do you sleep at night?
Lord Mayor.
I thought that was question time rather than speech time. Councillor Cassidy, through you, Mr Chair, didn't want me making a speech, but just delivered his own speech, which was full of rubbish, as usual. We know that the best way for Brisbane residents to sleep at night is to know that they've got a council that's on their side, that's looking out for their interests, that's keeping costs down, that's thinking about the things that matter to them, like reducing traffic congestion, keeping rates at half the rate of inflation like we did this year, investing in the suburbs, building a better Brisbane, dealing with the challenges of housing with real solutions rather than higher taxes. These are the things that help the people of Brisbane sleep at night because they know we've got their back. We know, they know that while the other levels of government, the Labour Party and the Greens abandon them, while the Labour Party and the Greens want to tax them more, we've got their back because we care about them. We care about the people of Brisbane, and we care about doing the right thing by them. And because we care, we also need to manage their money responsibly. And just like they've had to reduce their own expenditure in their household budgets, and just like businesses had to reduce their expenditure and reduce their costs, we've had to do the same thing. It is the right and responsible thing to do. And I know Labour and Greens councils will never get this, they'll never be on the same page, because they want to put their hand in your pocket. They want to go deeper and deeper into your pocket, and that's going to hurt the people of Brisbane, that's going to cause the people of Brisbane not to sleep at night. And so we want them to know that we are on their side, we've got their back, and we're looking after their interests, and we're managing their money responsibly. But the things that they want us to spend their money on are things like investing in better transport infrastructure, in road upgrades, in keeping rates down, in cost-of-living initiatives, in incentivising the cost of, reducing the cost of housing, incentivising new housing by reducing the cost of new housing. Now, in the Courier-Mail today, it was made really clear that right now, approved projects in Brisbane that have development approvals that are theoretically shovel-ready aren't being built because the finances don't stack up. Now, we hear simplistic and really destructive things being said by both Labour and the Greens that suggests that only if these people were taxed more, they'd suddenly start magically building things. I mean, who believes this stuff? This is out of touch with any reality. But the reality is, people aren't building things at the moment because it's not financially viable, it's not feasible. And even if it is feasible, they have trouble getting a construction company to sign up to a project. That is the reality out there at the moment. And so if Labour cares about the people of Brisbane, if the Greens care about the people of Brisbane, they'll support more housing, they'll support initiatives to bring down the cost of housing, they'll support initiatives to bring down the pressure on rates for rate payers, but they oppose all of those things. And so we know what's really going on here. They're running a different agenda, it is very clearly different to our agenda. We are thinking about the people of Brisbane, we are working to make sure that they can sleep at night, in the knowledge that we've got their back and we care about them. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions? Councillor Landers.
Thank you, Chair. And my question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, with the cost of living biting, can you please update the chamber on how the Shriner council is helping keep the cost of celebrating down this Christmas?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, I thank councillor Landers for the question. And I know that councillor Landers is very much looking forward to Christmas, just like all of us in this chamber are. So like you, councillor Landers, I know that the cost of living is affecting both households and individuals across the city at the moment in the lead-up to the holiday season. The Shriner council knows that residents are feeling the pinch, which is why we are continuing to create programmes that aim to support residents over the holiday season. As an example, this year, the Shriner council will make available over $110,000 to benefit over 25,000 seniors this holidays through the seniors' celebration donation programme. This programme helps seniors groups and organisations across Brisbane cover the costs of their end-of-year facilities, including Christmas parties and social events aimed towards fostering inclusion and connection. This year, this funding will go towards supporting over 500 groups and organisations for this very purpose, giving our seniors the support they need to engage in social outings, covering funding for bus trips and celebrations such as Christmas parties. The Shriner council wants to make sure that our seniors remain active in the community and have provided ample opportunities to get out and connect with family and friends. And by providing funding to seniors' organisations through this programme, we are able to accomplish exactly that. Lord Mayor's seniors' Christmas parties are also something that are set to take place in City Hall between Monday the 4th of December through to Friday the 9th of December. This year, it's expected that a total audience of over 14,000 residents will take part in the celebrations, enjoying some light refreshments before settling in for some quality entertainment. To give you an idea of what residents can expect over these five days, the main auditorium of City Hall will be transformed to reflect this year's theme, A Magical Christmas, with a cast of talent performing a range of traditional and contemporary Christmas songs. These celebrations are set to entertain and delight participating all of the residents that are coming along by combining the festive spirit of Christmas with the wonders of magic, music, and make-believe, performed by the very best of our local homegrown talent, and all for just $5. For the first time ever, all tickets for this year's programme sold out in record time, with all 14,400 tickets being snapped up within two weeks, providing a wonderful opportunity for Brisbane seniors to connect with family and friends at Christmas. It's also a great opportunity for us to support the Lord Mayor's charitable trust with the $5 going towards that wonderful cause which helps all of our frontline organisations. The growing success of this programme is thanks in no small part to the great work of the many areas of council, including our creative communities and contact centre team who play a huge role in the delivery of this programme. This holiday season, the Shriner council is also making it even easier to visit one of our 22 pools across our aquatic network through our $2 Summer Dips initiative. The $2 Summer Dips initiative was announced earlier in the year to provide cost-of-living relief to residents and is another great way to entertain the whole family at a fraction of the usual cost. From the Acacia Ridge Leisure Centre to the Sangate Swimming Pool, families and friends can come together these holidays for an inexpensive day out. Beginning on the 1st of December, visitors can expect to pay only $2 to gain general admission to one of our council pools through to the end of February. Nothing says summer in Brisbane like a day by the pool, and with 22 council swimming pools across Brisbane with various facilities at each location, residents across the suburbs will be able to find the perfect place to cool down, unwind, and relax with family and friends these holidays. These three programmes and initiatives I have mentioned are just a few of the many, many ways that the Shriner council is making it easier for residents across Brisbane to unwind and celebrate with their loved ones over the holiday period. As another example, there are more than 2,000 parks across Brisbane for residents to explore, and the Free Park Play Programme also returns to Victoria Park this summer from the 8th to the 17th of January. This is set to include a range of exciting outdoor activities on offer, encouraging kids to stay active and let their imagination soar. Our 33 libraries will also have a bumper schedule of free activities for kids, but also plenty for families to do together, including free movie screenings and much, much more. Readers of all ages and interests can also discover the hottest reach this summer with council summer reading programme, which kicks off on Saturday the 9th of December. So in closing, there really will be something for everyone across Brisbane these holidays, and we hope that residents make the most of all the free and low-cost options.
Councillor Howard, your time has expired. Thank you. Councillor Johnson.
Yes, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, it's been over one year since the Southern Region SES lost their depot at Rockleigh due to a change in ownership. The southern suburbs of Brisbane are without a permanent SES depot, and their people and their facilities, including boats, have been sent to the north side, to Newmarket, where they can't help people who live in Fairfield, Yoronga, and the Gabba. Will you today commit to finding a new permanent home for the Southern Region SES depot as soon as possible?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question, councillor Johnson. I have met with the state government on this issue. I've identified locations that I think would be suitable for the SES depot to be located, locations that are close to busy access roads so they can get in and out, but locations, importantly, that aren't subject to flooding themselves. I have put these suggestions forward to the state government and the minister himself, and waiting to hear back. So I think there's some good things that we can do in-
Councillor Johnson.
There's some good things that we can do in collaboration with the state government. We are very proud supporters of the SES. And when so many different SES groups across the state are struggling when it comes to retaining members, we've got really strong SES groups who are doing well, they're getting new members in all the time. And we also provide significant financial support to our SES as well. We make sure that they have great equipment, they have great facilities, and we also contribute financially as a thank you each year to the volunteers that do that important work. I don't think there's any doubt that we support SES. It might be called the State Emergency Service, but it's really the BES, the Brisbane Emergency Service. We're the ones that actually provide the support to them. And when the state's given an opportunity to do so, we hear crickets, we hear absolute crickets.
Councillor Johnson.
Look, councillor Johnson wants to play politics with this issue. The reality is, we are waiting for advice from the state government on whether those sites that I suggested would be suitable, so that we can work together to finding an appropriate location for an SES depot in that part of Brisbane.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Wolf.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, keeping Brisbane clean, green, and sustainable is a key part of our plan, making sure Brisbane just keeps getting better. Can you please update the chamber on the latest milestone in our Free Native Plants programme?
Thank you. Councillor Davis, you've got the call.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, can I thank councillor Wolf for the question. And it was great to see councillor Wolf joined by the Lord Mayor and councillor Adaman at the Green Heart pop-up event that was held earlier this month at Indrapili Shopping Town. The Free Native Plants are so popular at these events, Mr Chair, that we often see people lined up early in order that they can get their Free Native Plant. And often we give out around 500 plants at these events, so they're extraordinarily popular. And of course, the kids are always very excited to take home their Green Ranger pack. Mr Chair, this pop-up marked a very special occasion, not just because it was councillor Wolf's first Green Heart event, but because it marked a significant milestone, with 250,000 Free Native Plants being handed out during this Lord Mayor's administration. So it's a quarter of a million plants that have been handed out to Brisbane's residents and also schools and organisations. The Free Native Plants programme is one of our longest-running and most popular offerings, and is a perfect example of the practical environmentalism that this administration is all about. And as you know, Mr Chair, council has set a target of 40% natural habitat cover across mainland Brisbane by 2031. And this is going to be achieved by a raft of green initiatives, like our street tree planting, environmental offsets, of course, bushland acquisition programme, and now the Biodiverse Brisbane Initiative, which will see 1 million native plants placed along about 500 hectares of riparian habitat. But of course, Brisbane's habitat isn't just in our parks and conservation reserves, it's also in our backyards. Habitat on private property provides critical links across the city for creatures, both great and small. We might take it for granted, but being able to reach out and touch nature in our own backyards is one of the things that is very special about living in Brisbane and making it such a fantastic place to live. Through the Free Native Plants programme, we encourage residents to test out their green thumbs at home and to do their bit to build Brisbane's urban forest. But you don't need a backyard to embrace our city's biodiversity. Even a small native garden on an apartment balcony can provide rich habitat for smaller critters like birds, native bees, and even the occasional possum. And that's why we offer a diversity of different species, from ground covers, tufting plants, climbers, small and medium shrubs, and of course, feature trees. We know that the most popular native plants people are keen to green their gardens with are thyme honey myrtle, bottle brush, and coastal rosemary. And with 250,000 plants now given away, the programme represents a huge contribution towards building a healthy and connected habitat across Brisbane. So it's no surprise that we are now sitting at 38.9% natural habitat cover across our city, and we're on track to meet this 40% target. Mr Chair, there's a number of different ways residents can get their hands on Free Native Plants through this programme. There are our Green Heart events, which I mentioned earlier, and our community planting days, where residents cannot only roll up their sleeves and do planting in their community, but they can take a plant home with them too. But if you can't make it to Green Heart Fair or a pop-up, any Brisbane resident can get a Free Native Plant voucher by visiting a library, a ward office, or regional business centre, just with a rates notice or proof of residence. They can then collect a Free Native Plant from one of our participating nurseries. For those who are really keen to get their hands on some native greenery, you can also visit one of our environment centres at Downfall Creek, Carrawatha, or Boondle Wetlands and collect your Free Native Plant on the spot. And I know, Lord Mayor, one of the lovely parts of the citizenship ceremonies that you host at City Hall is when the new residents are presented with a Free Native Plant to pop in their garden and help them to literally put down roots as a new Australian citizen. And speaking of putting down roots, our city, as our city grows, we target suburbs with recently-built homes to assist residents in establishing their new gardens. Residents in a target suburb can simply email the Free Native Plants team to receive their vouchers. And as I said, Mr Chair, living in an apartment or unit complex is no barrier to accessing our Free Native Plants programme, as well as being available to residents, bodies corporates can also access up to, to Free Native Plants per unit to plant out shared spaces and gardens. Mr Chair, this programme is just one of the ways that everyone can do their bit to help keep Brisbane the most biodiverse capital city in Australia.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Your time has expired. Councillor Griffiths.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, Labour's candidates were out door-knocking all over Brisbane this last weekend. Tracy Price was also out there all over Brisbane, meeting people this weekend. They were door-knocking in Brackenridge, Northgate, I was out there with Shane in Holland Park, Callum Vale, and Compera. And there was a really clear message coming through. People know that they're paying more and getting less from your council, and they are feeling it. Given that you are personally responsible for the budget, will you finally admit that 20 years in power is too long for the LMP?
Lord Mayor.
Says the guy who's been here for 21 years. It's like, seriously, this is, this is not comedy week, is it? Like, and, and we love to hear Mark Bailey having a go at the 20 years when his side of politics been in for 30 years of the last 35 years. It's hilarious. It is hilarious. Look, the, the administration and its predecessors are proud to be the custodians of the biggest investment ever made in the suburbs of Brisbane, in the infrastructure in Brisbane- in the infrastructure in Brisbane, in the parks of Brisbane, in the green space of Brisbane. And look, I'm glad to hear that you guys were out door knocking because you've got a lot of listening to do. And, you know, we were out on the weekend too, weren't we? We were out sandy, opening a new bikeway in the suburbs of Brisbane. And it was fantastic to see the ongoing investment that continues to happen right across the suburbs of Brisbane, in those rapidly growing areas. And it was fascinating to talk to the residents as well out there that we're just so positive about our city and its livability and the investment that council continues to make across the city and suburbs. So, you know, it's one thing to talk to Labour Party members and staffers, which I know you were doing councillor Griffiths. It's one thing to get the renter crowd out, but you should probably try and talk to some real people as well. Our side does that every weekend. We do that all the time on an ongoing basis. And it is enlightening because they always have suggestions for improvement and we always listen. But the political lines and the political hacks that you talk to, you should probably not listen to them because they are very jaded. They're very negative about things. They're very negative about the city. They're very negative about the future. And they're obviously very negative about their chances at the state election next year as well. So they're in a world of pain. And so probably don't listen to the negatives councillor Griffiths. Listen to real people. Don't listen to the staffers and the renter crowd. Listen to the real people, the people that care about the investment in parks that we're making, the investment in green space, the trees that we're planting, the bikeways we're building, the roads we're upgrading, the roads we're resurfacing, the footpaths we're reconstructing and building. The incredible network of facilities that we're improving just up in places like Everton Park, a brand new library being built. And I'm pleased to say, thank you councillor Davis. Thank you councillor Howard for bringing in that project under budget by $750,000. That is a great outcome. It's going to be a wonderful facility when it opens up. And it's even better that it's been brought in under budget as well. I think, you know, it's really challenging to bring in any project on budget at this point in time. But that's a credit to the team who managed to do that. And, you know, it's just more of the suburban investment that's being made right across the city. We recently upgraded the Anala Library as well. There's been investment in libraries in councillor Cassidy's area as well. You don't hear him mentioning that. He doesn't like to talk about that. Don't hear councillor Strunk complaining about the investment in the Anala Library as well. But yeah, apparently these are all things that happen because of Labour councillors. But councillor Griffiths said that I'm personally responsible for the budget just now. So what is it? What is it? I know it's different stories for different people. But the story of Brisbane is an incredibly positive one. It's why people are coming here and wanting to live here from other parts of Australia. And it's why we're investing record amounts in the suburbs. It's why we're investing through our guaranteed suburbs first initiative, more than 80% into the suburbs of Brisbane of all the expenditure. And that hasn't changed. That has not changed. The investment remains at those record high levels. In the budget, we confirmed that suburbs first commitment was part of our agenda. We confirm that again today, that going forward, now, last year, at least 80% of all council spending will be in the suburbs of Brisbane. We've made that commitment and we've continued to exceed that commitment. And so even though things are tough and we've needed to make sensible savings in expenditure, we have well over 80% of our expenditure going into the suburbs of Brisbane. The suburbs I've mentioned as well are just a small few examples of the investment that is happening right across the city. It is ongoing in every part of Brisbane. You see the work going on, you see the investment being made and you see people appreciating and enjoying that investment that's made. Our green space and parks and our libraries are a great part of the livability of our city.
councillor Adaman?
Yeah, thank you Chair. My question is to the Chair of City Standards Committee councillor Marks. Last week, the Shrinna Council released its Towards Zero Waste Strategy. Can you please update the chamber on the importance of this strategy, including how it keeps our city clean, green and sustainable?
councillor Marks?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Adaman for the question. It's a pleasure to update the chamber on the Towards Zero Waste Strategy, which will be delivered by the Shrinna Council. As the fastest growing capital city in Australia, our council is dedicated to innovation and enhancing waste management practices. Let me outline how the Towards Zero Waste Strategy is not only innovative, but crucial for maintaining our city's cleanliness, greenery and sustainability. Starting with our commitment to expand rubbish collection services and offering substantial rebates. So our vision for Brisbane is to move towards zero waste. An ambitious goal requiring collaboration among council, residents, government, businesses, industry and the research and education sectors. Every resident also plays a crucial part in this journey. Whether it's a small act like picking up a piece of litter or making informed choices about recycling, each action contributes to shaping the future of Brisbane. So let's delve into the practical steps that we're taking to achieve this vision and to reduce waste that's designated for landfills. We are expanding our food waste recycling programme from 6,000 to 12,000 households. Additionally, we're committed to a stage rollout of organics and food waste recycling in the coming years, all without reducing the red top bin collection service. Notably, the cost of the green waste recycling service has been reduced to just $1 per week. We're investigating more locations for advanced community composting hubs, similar to the one in the New Farm Park. Councillor Howard will be more than happy to answer any questions on how that's going because it's a very big successful programme and it's now one of Brisbane's most popular composting hub. The New Farm Advanced Community Composting Hub has more than 1,200 households that are currently registered and approximately one tonne of food scrap is collected each month. We're also looking at providing convenient options for recycling options, items like batteries and CDs that can't go into the yellow top bin. Another one that's a particular favourite of mine is the blister packs. And I actually have a container in my office that I'm happy to take any blister packs, medical packs into my office. And I've already filled one carton and I've got two more to go. I'll get all the nursing homes, drop them all into my office. We're also installing 1,500 new recycling bins in our parks and public spaces, which will increase the opportunity for recycling on the go. Containers for change, exchange, it's a new revenue source for the sorry, the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust. So we're working with them to partner to install some new bins. We've got two at South Bank already. And there'll be some incoming to the Queen Street Mall. And this will give opportunity for residents who are walking through the mall, if they wish to make their Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust their fund of choice, then they can choose to refund the money into that bin. And waste vouchers will go digital. And we're partnering with industry for also the household soft plastics recycling trial. We also have on-plan incentives for anaerobic digestion and technologies in apartment buildings, as well as promoting composting and worming farms as part of our commitment to sustainable waste management. The Towards Zero Waste Strategy set for release later this month is a significant step towards ensuring cleaner, green and a more affordable future for all Brisbane residents. And I want to take the opportunity to thank everybody involved. There's been numerous chairs before myself who started on this journey. It's a journey that has morphed from what had started originally some years ago to where we are now. And it's continuing to morph as time goes on. Industry change, needs change, technologies change. But I also want to say a very big thank you to everyone involved in this Towards Zero Waste Strategy. The council officers have worked tremendous amounts of hours, as have myself and my own staff on this strategy. Thank the Lord Mayor for making this a reality. I'm very proud to be able to produce this as a chair of this portfolio. And it's a big responsibility trying to work out what we're going to do with waste for our city for the years moving forward. And I really appreciate the Lord Mayor giving me the opportunity to take on that challenge and all of his feedback, which has been numerous. And he's got plenty of ideas. And I'm really grateful to be able to take those to the offices and put them out there and go, what about this and what about that? So I can't thank the officers enough and everyone who's worked on this space. And I'm really looking forward to bringing the whole community, as we mentioned, businesses, residents, other councils, I'd love you to be on board with this and make this a real thing of reality. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you councillor Marks. And that ends question time.
Point of order Chair?
Point of order councillor Whitney.
I move suspension of standing orders to allow me to move a motion.
Seconded.
We have a motion before us to suspend standing orders. Moved by councillor Whitney, seconded by councillor Cassidy. Councillor Whitney, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Just today, three different major publications have released articles highlighting some truly barbaric and homophobic material published and distributed through the Bayside. These flyers are designed to cause fear and panic around Winton Fringe's Bay Pride. Due to these articles being published today, I move the following motion. All Brisbane City Council councillors-
Mr Chair?
Point of order councillor Howard?
I understand that councillor Whitney needs to say why this could not have been put on the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Howard.
I did just highlight that.
Thank you. Then there's no further reason to speak.
No, 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 I haven't read, sorry.
You don't need to read the motion. You don't, this is councillors-
I'm spreading my case.
Stop. This is a procedural motion as to whether we suspend standing orders. It's not the substantive motion. Thank you. councillor Cassidy? No, I don't. Councillor Cassidy, you've got a point of order?
Yeah, so councillor Whitney was halfway-
Just one moment. Sorry councillor Johnson, can we just hear councillor Cassidy please?
Councillor Whitney was just, from what I could hear, halfway through reading what the motion would be. If standing orders were suspended, how are we to vote on that? If we're not understanding what the motion is we're going to be debating? And you cut her off halfway through?
Thank you councillor Cassidy. Under the meeting's local law, it's a procedural motion. There's no debate. We don't need to hear the motion because we need to pass the procedural motion for suspending standing orders. She had spoken. She had- Councillors! Just one moment councillor Whitney. I will give you the call. Would you mind returning to your seat? There's no debate on this. The meeting's local law is quite clear. It's three minutes to establish why suspension or why the agenda should be suspended. It's not about the substantive motion. It's about why you were unable to lodge a motion, a notified motion before one o'clock. Councillor Whitney had indicated that she had given her reason. She did. She actually mentioned it councillor Cassidy. She returned to her seat. Just one moment. Councillor Whitney?
Yeah, sorry Chair, I will point out that you didn't actually let me finish my sentence. I did say that I have just and I'm going to continue. You let me finish, you cut me off at I have just. You didn't let me finish my sentence.
Was your, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Just stop councillor Cassidy. Councillor Whitney? Councillor Cassidy, I will go to the warnings. Councillor Whitney, was the rest of your statement in relation to the reason why?
Yes.
Thank you. You can continue.
Okay, I might just start again because of the interruption so people can truly understand. Just today, three different major publications have released articles highlighting some truly barbaric and homophobic material published and distributed throughout the Bayside. These flyers are designed to cause fear and panic around the Bayside. Around Bay Pride, sorry. All Brisbane City Council councillors unequivocally support Winton Fringe Bay Pride Parade and wholeheartedly condemn the homophobic and transphobic beliefs that are currently being spread by a minority within the community. Due to these articles being published today, I move that we support the motion I just read out.
This is on councillors, despite what councillor Whitney said, this is on the suspension of standing orders. We are voting on the suspension of standing orders, not the substantive motion that councillor Whitney should not have read out. Now, I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye!
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Whitney, can you please-
Thank you Chair. So I now-
councillor Whitney, can you please read out your substantive motion please?
Sure. Thank you Chair.
Thank you.
I move that all Brisbane City Council councillors unequivocally support Winton Fringe Bay Pride Parade and wholeheartedly condemn the homophobic and transphobic beliefs that are currently being spread by a minority within the community.
Seconded.
I'll just wait for the- Thanks Billy. It has been moved by councillor Whitney and seconded by councillor Cassidy that all Brisbane City councillors unequivocally support Winton Fringe Festival, Bay Pride Parade and wholeheartedly condemn the homophobic and transphobic beliefs that are currently being spread by a minority within the community. Councillor Whitney, to your motion please.
Yes, thank you. I'd actually like to start by thanking councillor-
Point of order councillor Hutton?
Chair, in accordance with the meeting's local law 2001, 42.2b, I move debate on this motion now before the meeting be adjourned and be debated at the end of today's agenda.
Seconded.
We have a procedural motion to move debate on this motion to the end of the agenda. All those in favour say aye.
Aye!
Those against say no.
Aye!
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Whitney and seconded by councillor Cassidy. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Councillors, a bit of quiet please. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 19 in favour and 7 against.
Thank you councillors. The debate on the motion will continue at the end of the meeting.
Point of order Chair?
Point of order councillor Cassidy?
I move suspension of standing orders to enable me to move a motion.
Seconded.
We have a motion before us to suspend standing orders. Moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Councillor Cassidy, you've got three minutes.
Thanks very much Chair. The Lord Mayor's budget cuts were announced on October 17. And every single day, $1.6 million has been ripped from council services and suburban projects and from council's workforce. We now know that council staff are being sacked left, right and centre. We understand that today, just I think about an hour and a half ago, the Lord Mayor released this budget review to the media. He gave the document to media outlets, but he hasn't seen fit to bring that. It was ticked off at E and C yesterday. And he's released that information to the media today. So we think the right and proper thing would be for the Lord Mayor to bring that information to the chamber right now, right here today, so we can debate his budget cuts.
Point of order? Point of order. I'm happy to table this document right now. And in fact, I was just planning to do that in my E and C report if councillor Cassidy would show some patience.
It's not a point of order.
Councillors, please. Lord Mayor, councillor Johnson, I will reprimand you if you continue to yell out. Lord Mayor, that is not a valid point of order. Councillor Cassidy, please continue.
Point of order. Just for the record, Mr Chair, I didn't yell.
Don't uphold your point of order. Councillor Cassidy, please continue.
So yes, thanks very much Chair. So on top of the document which has headline figures of programme wide, we would like to call on the Lord Mayor to release all details of all cuts that he is making to the council budget.
Thank you councillors. We will now move a procedural motion to suspend standing orders to accept a motion from councillor Cassidy. All those in favour say aye.
Aye!
Those against say no.
No!
The noes have it. We'll now move on. Lord Mayor, consideration of committee reports please.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 13th of November 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 13th of November 2023 be adopted. Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before I move on to other things, I wanted to update councillors on the process in terms of budget changes going forward. And so yesterday, Civic Cabinet considered the second budget review, one which we've promised to bring through before the end of this session and one which will be coming through for debate next week in council. I table an advanced copy of the budget review now. Uh, thanks Billy.
Councillor Johnson. Councillor Johnson?
I table, uh, the budget review advanced copy, uh, one week in advance, uh, of, uh, when we'll be having the debate. Uh, all councillors are also, uh, provided with this, uh, in the normal course of business as well, uh, just like they are for every budget review. Um, the difference is they're not getting it, uh, tabled a week in advance normally, uh, but this time they are. Uh, what we have, uh, been tabled-
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnson.
Yes, I seek leave to spend, uh, suspend standing orders in order to move an urgency motion. Seconded.
We have a procedural motion for the suspension of standing orders moved by councillor Johnson, seconded by councillor Cassidy. Councillor Johnson, you've got three minutes. Sorry, Massey, sorry, my apologies. Uh, councillor Johnson, you've got three minutes.
Thank you. In the last five minutes or so, I've heard something that I was not aware of, that is, the Lord Mayor has released to the media a copy of, uh, the budget cuts that he has been proposing for the past six weeks, uh, and that he has now tabled a copy, uh, of that, uh, report. Um, the problem with this is the tabled document is not available to councillors, uh, we have to make a formal written request to get a copy of this document and that takes up to ten days. So the Lord Mayor has tabled a document, knowing that councillors do not have immediate access to it, other than looking at the one single copy that sits in the council chamber. So, uh, I'm calling on the Lord Mayor, if he is genuine about wanting to make sure that he is transparent about these changes, that he also emails a copy of this document to all councillors, uh, so that we can see this document and fully understand this document and we don't have to wait until five P M on Thursday night when the council papers are released, or ten days' time if we make a file request, uh, tomorrow. So, um, the Lord Mayor needs to be, uh, more transparent here and make sure this document is actually available to councillors, which it is not by simply tabling it. So I'm moving a motion that the Lord Mayor provides a copy of all, of the, uh, documents tabled to all councillors via email this afternoon.
Councillors, there is a procedural motion before us, uh, to make available document that is already available over there. It is a suspension of standing orders, sorry, thank you Lord Mayor, suspension of standing orders for an urgency motion to make available document that's already available, don't understand why. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
Noes have it.
Division. Division. Division.
Division called by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Massey, eyes to my right, nose to my left. It's sitting right over there councillor, if you want to have a look at it. You can look at it, it's right in front of you.
We have to make a written file of it, it takes ten days to get a copy of it.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seven in favour and nineteen against.
Councillors, the procedural motion has been lost. Lord Mayor, you've got the call.
Okay, uh, as you correctly pointed out, um, if any councillor wants to take the time like they're doing right now to have a look at the document, uh, they can do so. And they can spend as long as they like in this meeting, taking notes, uh, and having a look through the document. Um, so what we've heard here is a complete misrepresentation of the reality. If a councillor wants to see this document and go through it and make notes, they can do so. Uh, I note that councillor Cassidy and councillor Griffiths are doing so right now, um, and they're welcome to spend as long as they like. And, you know, uh, councillor Johnston is as well and any other councillor that wants to have a look, uh, so.
Councillor Johnson. Lord Mayor.
So, uh, in terms of, uh, where we've been, so, uh, last month, we announced that we'd be making, uh, spending reductions of ten percent, uh, and that, we had two simple choices, either reducing spending or, uh, passing on to residents higher rates in the future, something that we're not prepared to do. And so we want to keep the costs down for residents, we have kept the costs down this financial year, we have kept the costs down last financial year, uh, and in fact, uh, across my entire period as Lord Mayor, uh, rates over that period of time in total have increased by less than inflation.
Yeah.
Less than inflation. Um, so our record is very clear, uh, that we work hard to keep rates down for residents and we're continuing to do so. Uh, by making ten percent, uh, spending reduction, sensible savings, uh, we're also able to continue on with ninety percent of all the things that council does. Uh, and so, uh, it's, this is obviously an anathema to the Labour councillors and the Greens councillor and the independent councillor, that we would, you know, possibly considering tightening the belt like everyone else is, but that's what we're doing because it's the right thing to do. What I can say though, is that the ten percent savings, uh, will not impact on public transport, will not impact on waste collection services, including curbside collection or red top bin or green top bin or yellow top bin or any other kind of bin. Uh, it will not impact on mosquito spraying, it will not, uh, impact on community grants. Uh, so these things have been excluded and it will not impact on our eighty million dollar cost of living initiatives either. Now, councillor Cassidy, uh, and his colleagues have asked, um, in recent weeks, well, what's changed since the budget? What's changed? As though, you know, nothing, nothing's happened, there's no, there's nothing out there in the real world that's changed. Uh, let me go through exactly what's changed. First of all, uh, inflation has remained higher for longer than forecasts earlier this year. Uh, and that is a fact, uh, it is a fact acknowledged by the federal government, it is a fact acknowledged by, uh, other governments, including state governments, um, it is a fact acknowledged by anyone who's been paying attention. So inflation has been higher for longer than forecast earlier this year when we were preparing the budget. Secondly, interest rates are higher than they were when we prepared the budget. Uh, thirdly, uh, there are fifty million dollars worth of Q R A or Queensland Reconstruction Authority grants that we applied for, which have been rejected.
Yeah.
Fifty million. And that means that the applications we've put in for betterment works and, and making our assets more resilient and, and, uh, that recovery process, um, is now pushed back. What this means is that the Q R A and the state government will be up for higher costs in the future if and when we have another flood. Because, uh, the classic example is the Wolverhampton Street Bridge on Kedram Brook. We know Kedram Brook was hit very hard in the flood. And there are a number of bridges that were impacted and some that were destroyed entirely. Wolverhampton Street Bridge, uh, was destroyed, uh, we have replaced it, and so there is a bridge in place at the moment, but what we applied to the Q R A for is for a better, stronger, more resilient bridge to be built. And what did they say? No, the current one's fine.
Yep.
And so that means that other levels of government will face a higher cost in the future if we have another flood and that bridge is impacted again. It's disappointing. Uh, and there's fifty million dollars worth of those grants that we've applied for that have been refused. We also had a higher than budget wage increase to our council workers because, uh, we support our council workers, uh, we pay them well and in good faith, we worked with our council workers to make sure they got a fair wage increase. That was higher than was budgeted. And that didn't stop us, we did the right thing by our employees. That was, uh, a change between when the budget came down and now. Uh, the Mogul Road Corridor Upgrade Project has had significant cost escalations. Uh, and in fact, um, a big part of that councillor Wines has been through to service relocations in costs that we do not have a choice in.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, costs like, uh, the Telstra charges, which have gone up, we've got a nine million dollar extra bill from Telstra.
Above what?
Above what was anticipated, just to Telstra alone, nine million dollars extra to Telstra for moving around cables. And can we negotiate that?
No.
Can we refuse to pay?
No.
Can we go with someone else?
No.
Um, and the same happens with Energex, one point two million dollars extra there, the gas company, one point eight million dollars extra. Uh, and so an extra fourteen point three million dollars just for service relocations for Mogul Road. That's before you start even building, um, the, the road surface itself, this is works underneath, um, many of those are impacted by third party providers and utilities. There has been a sixty million dollar reduction in infrastructure charges compared with the forecasts, sixty million. So if you start to look at the list, I've just mentioned fifty million dollars in grants that we didn't get from the Queensland Reconstruction Authority, which is a state agency, sixty million dollars less in infrastructure charges revenue than forecast, uh, and that's because of lower than expected building activity.
Yeah.
A really concerning trend and another reason why we're supporting the incentivisation of new homes. On top of that, almost six million dollars less in rates coming in, and get a load of this. Investors, as a result of the conditions being created by the state Labour Government, are fleeing the market. They are selling their investment properties and those properties are becoming owner occupier properties. And so there's six million dollars reduction in rates just based on that trend of investor properties being sold and them becoming owner occupier properties. And so what do you think will happen with the genius Labour Greens strategy of charging investors more? What will they do? They'll get out of the market altogether. Um, that will only force up housing costs, that will only force higher costs on renters, uh, that is a counterproductive policy if ever I've seen one. There are twelve million dollars less than expected in parking related revenue coming in. Twelve million. Uh, there is, uh, a sixty-five million dollar bring forward for projects like Brisbane Metro and Green Bridges due to the projects meeting milestones earlier than forecast at the budget. And so, you know, there's some big changes in a short period of time and councillor Cassidy said, what's changed? What's, what's going on? There's nothing, there's nothing changed. Uh, there's been significant changes and, uh, all those cha, all those changes have occurred since the budget was locked in. Having said that, uh, we're investing one point four seven billion dollars into infrastructure this year, a record. Never before has the council invested this much in infrastructure in any one year. The average spend, um, over the last ten years on infrastructure has been around eight hundred and forty million. This year, one point four seven billion dollars. Um, and eighty-six percent of that investment across the suburbs and city is happening in the suburbs of Brisbane. We've identified twenty-four million dollars in savings for Brisbane Metro, uh, we've identified-
Lord Mayor, I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Move for extension, seconded.
We have a motion for extension moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Hutton, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor, you've got the call.
Thank you. Uh, so I was mentioning, we've identified twenty-four million dollars in savings for Brisbane Metro, seven million dollars in savings for the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge, uh, two million dollars in savings for the Fig Tree Pocket Kenmore Road, uh, project, which is being completed under budget, two million dollars under budget, uh, and seven hundred and fifty thousand for the Everdome Park Library. That's in addition to the several million dollars we're saving by delaying the, uh, installation of shade on the Victoria Bridge. Uh, as I've said in the past, that project will happen, but it will happen when we, we can afford to do it. Uh, we've in fact put the footings in place for the shade, the footings, um, have been installed. And so, uh, when we're in a position to, uh, move forward with that project, it will be able to be done, uh, in a more cost effective and straightforward manner due to the preparation work that has been done. Uh, we've also, uh, obviously been impacted by this fifty million dollars of grants from Q R A that have been, uh, projected. Um, we've identified seventy million dollars in savings in I T contracts, back office efficiencies, fleet replacement, consultancies, contractors and catering and travel. We've saved more than one point five million dollars by postponing councillor office upgrades and reducing the award budgets, training and travel. We've already reduced spending on advertising and publications by one million dollars, including scaling back Brisbetter and Living in Brisbane. Uh, we've also saved three million dollars on grass cutting as a result of the dry weather conditions that we've had, uh, up until now. Obviously, it's raining at the moment and the grass cutting is underway, uh, across the city, uh, as we speak, um, that, that kicked off yesterday, um, but there was a period of time where the grass was not growing because it was so dry. And in fact, the grass dried out, it was crispy under feet, um, there was actually genuinely no point in mowing it, um, but we've, uh, kicked off the mowing, uh, this week and, uh, we're able to save three million dollars during that dry period without impacting on the level of service or the standard of service. Uh, so these are the sort of things that we've confirmed through Cabinet, uh, and have been locked in and we're working, uh, on. Uh, this will come to council for debate next Tuesday and obviously we look forward to having that debate, uh, but by introducing these sensible savings, we're keeping the pressure down on rate payers, but we're also making sure that we can keep building better transport and roads, uh, we can keep incentivising new housing to be built and we can keep investing in the suburbs of Brisbane as well with eighty-six percent of all budget spending going into the suburbs. Uh, and now to be very clear, uh, Labour councillors, uh, will, uh, make the claims that there's been a ten percent spending reduction in the suburbs, or maybe they might claim it's been even more than that. I'll tell you what it's been, one percent, one percent. At the budget, we announced that eighty-seven percent of all spending would be in the suburbs. As a result of the changes we've made, eighty-six percent of all spending will be in the suburbs, a reduction of one percent. Uh, so don't believe them when they cook the books and when they, uh, tell their mistruths. The reality is eighty-six percent of all our budget spending will be in the suburbs of Brisbane. And our commitment to the suburbs hasn't changed and so while we've been able to find, uh, savings of ten percent, we've made sure that the investment keeps going into the areas that it's really needed, uh, and that's what a responsible administration does. Last night, the Story Bridge and the Victoria Bridge were lit up in blue, pink and white to support Transgender Day of Remembrance and, and Vicky and I, um, had the pleasure of, uh, seeing that lit up, um, last night as we're down, uh, near the Story Bridge. Um, it was, uh, once again, a commitment to our ongoing support, uh, for our very diverse community, our support for saying no against discrimination. And we say no against all kinds of discrimination, we say no against discrimination, uh, based on sexuality or gender, we say no against discrimination based on race, we say no against discrimination based on religion, uh, we say no on, uh, discrimination based on sex, uh, and, uh, that has been a consistent position of ours and one that we continue to hold. Uh, and, um, it was great to see the bridge lit up last night, well, those both bridges. Tomorrow night and Wednesday night, our assets will be lit up in orange to support Zonta Says No to Domestic Violence Against Women. Uh, this campaign raises awareness of domestic violence, uh, and family violence and supports women and children when they find themselves in these situations. On Thursday, our assets will be lit up in blue to support National Asbestos Awareness Week. Uh, on Friday, our assets will be lit up in yellow to support Jared Lyle Day. Jared Lyle was a professional, uh, Australian golfer who sadly died from cancer at the age of thirty-six. And, uh, the Australian PGA Championships will be helping raise money for this challenge, um, as, as part of Jared Lyle Day and, uh, that's something that we support. On Saturday, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge, City Hall and Radcliffe Place will be lit up in blue to support the Australian PGA Championships, which I just referred to before, they're being held here in Brisbane. And so some of the world's best golfers are here in Brisbane competing for the Joe Kirkwood Cup, Australia's oldest and most prestigious golf trophy. On Sunday, our assets will be lit up in purple once again to support the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust Annual Christmas Appeal, uh, which is very important and, uh, continuing to raise funds for the most needy in our community. Uh, the, uh, ongoing, uh, preparation for our upcoming summer season continues, um, last week, four point seven kilometres of track and trail maintenance was completed at Collo Reserve, uh, sorry, Collo Bushland Reserve, Prout Road Park, Ford Road Park, Tin Galper Creek Reserve and the Glider Forest. This week, there'll be more than five point two kilo- This week, there'll be more than five point two kilometres of work being done at Collo Bushland and Tin Galpa Creek Reserve, and also at Drew Vale Bushlands as well. This brings the year-to-date figure of a hundred and eighty-seven point four kilometres of track and trail maintenance done in our bushland reserves. And this is important, because those tracks, trails are important for access in the event of, for example, the bushfire. That's, those tracks need to be accessible, they need to be well-maintained, and we've been making sure that that occurs. Last week, twenty-seven point two hectares of vegetation works were completed across eleven different conservation reserves, including Cannon Hill Bushland, White Seal Reserve, Tin Galpa Creek Reserve, Mount Cabot Outlook Reserve, Warril Parklands, Capera Parklands and Bald Hills Creek Park, to name a few. This week, there'll be another twenty hectares of work delivered, bringing the year-to-date total of over two thousand and eighty hectares of vegetation works completed across the city. The submissions in front of us, item A, are the renewal of telecommunications leases. There's eighteen telecommunications leases across Brisbane, out of one hundred leases totally currently in place, with various telecommunications carriers. Under the Telecommunications Act nineteen ninety-seven, telcos have the power to occupy land for their facilities. However, we welcome their continued commitment to leasing these sites from council at fair value. The leases are for terms of up to ten years, with this length being the standard type for these leases. It ensures the lessee has certainty to be able to invest and upgrade their equipment at the site, and the starting rents are in line with market assessments, and these will increase annually by three percent. It's important that Brisbane residents and businesses have access to reliable telecommunications networks, including mobile phone networks, and we've recently seen the chaos that can occur when these networks go down. Commend that item to the chamber. Item B is the surplus property disposal at seven oh four New Cleveland Road, Wakely. This is the sale of land at Wakely, which was purchased for the intersection upgrade of New Cleveland Road and Tilly Road. That intersection upgrade was completed a number of years ago, and there's a surplus parcel of land that's left over. The land is zoned residential, so it's zoned emerging communities, which is a residential zoning. And obviously, we're in the middle of a housing shortage, and so, it's an opportunity now to have this land used for housing. There's currently one house on the site, but this site can accommodate more than one house, and so, we're looking to see that more houses can be built on this land. In the past, we've done, we've entered into arrangements with the City of Brisbane Investment Corporation, our city's future fund, and they've built housing, which has added to the supply of housing in our city. They've also previously delivered housing projects for supported accommodation for people with a disability, and this is an opportunity potentially for this site as well. And so, we're investigating that with CBIC. Obviously, whatever ends up happening here, it will, we think, add more housing to the mix, which is something that is needed right now in particular. It will also help when it comes to retrieving some costs, which we can pass on in terms of either improved services or projects or reductions in rates to the people of Brisbane. The item C is the operational plan and progress and quarterly financial report for the period ending September twenty twenty-three.
Lord Mayor, I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Move for extension, seconded.
A motion for extension moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Hutton. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor, you've got the call.
So as I was mentioning, this is the quarterly financial report for September twenty twenty-three. It includes statements of comprehensive income, financial position and changes in equity and cash flows for the first three months of the financial year. We can see in the first three months of the year, revenue is below budget and our capital expenditure is above budget. This is exactly what I was referring to before, but obviously, things have continued to move on even further since this report came out, and the revenue is down even more significantly than is shown in this report, and the expenses are up even more significantly than are shown in this report. We also know that we're facing headwinds going forward, and that's why we've decided to make some sensible savings to reduce expenditure by ten percent. In the first three months of the year, our capital investment is nearly one hundred and forty million higher than in the first three months of last financial year. So, a year-on-year comparison, we've invested one hundred and forty million dollars extra in the first three months of the financial year than we did in the first three months of last financial year, reflecting our record capital investment and spend on infrastructure. And that's important, because our population is growing faster than ever before. Now, the challenges that I just referred to before are real, and if we had waited any longer, ultimately, the result would have been that further costs would have been passed on to the ratepayers of Brisbane. By taking the action that we have and reducing spending by ten percent, making those sensible savings, we're able to keep the budget in a position that allows us to keep costs down for residents, deliver better roads and transport and more infrastructure, incentivise new housing, but also prioritise investment in the suburbs, whereby we're spending eighty-six percent of all our budget. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. I was speaking on all these items, and just asked that item A be taken seriously out of voting.
Sorry, item A be taken seriously out of voting? Thank you.
Thank you. And on clause A, we support the renewal of the telecommunications leases at various locations around Brisbane. That is an important asset for people who live in Brisbane to be able to continue to communicate. We saw last week, week before, how devastating that can be for not just people's livelihoods, but also their lives, if that's not a possibility. So, having access to this is important, so we support the renewal of those leases to make sure that that does continue into the future. Clause B, the surplus property disposal, New Cleveland Road, Wakely. This is a great opportunity for council and for this Lord Mayor to have shown some leadership when it comes to the housing crisis and partner directly with a community housing provider. We know that throughout the last year, there have been assessments of available land, both at state level and at a council level, that could be used for housing. We know some of that land that was identified at all levels initially were deemed not to be appropriate for housing and long-term housing. This is a site that council owns, that has been deemed appropriate for long-term housing. But instead of partnering with a community housing provider, whether it's BAC Brisbane Housing Corporation, whether it's brick housing or blue-chip housing, or some of these really well-established community housing providers, or even just going and talking to Q Shelter and saying, "What do you think is the best use of this residential housing land in Brisbane?" The Lord Mayor and his LMP council have done this special deal with CBIC. This special behind closed doors deal with CBIC. And that's an interesting one, because the Lord Mayor made this comment and said that CBIC helps address costs for council and ensures that, you know, councils, the pressure on ratepayers is pushed down through the dividend we receive from CBIC, except that's no longer the case. What CBIC do is take more from council in rent paid to them, then they return in a dividend to council in the order of millions of dollars. So we've got this land that's sitting here at the moment, that could be used by a community housing provider. They could have that land for free, and they could have their hundred percent waiver on infrastructure charges. And we could see an amazing outcome that would happen really quickly, really quickly, because these community housing providers are crying out for land. But what does the LMP do? I mean, true to Adrian Trinna's form, he thinks that style of housing is slum living, so he'd prefer CBIC to develop it. Now, remember a few years ago, when CBIC developed some land at Augusta Street to Wong? So this is a council-owned company, CBIC, doing a development that's applying to council for planning approval, that the council then gives the approval to its own company, to do high-end developments. And these weren't affordable housing, they weren't cheap, they were high-end, very expensive, pulling the market up. That's what that development did. And that's what we can assume is going to happen here today. Now, Lord Mayor tried to slip in there that there might be an outcome for supported accommodation, but apparently, he has no say over that, when you listen to other comments he makes about CBIC and that having an independent board and an independent staff that apparently the LMP council can't direct what to do. Well, that's what they say one week, but then the Lord Mayor comes in here the next week and says, puts all these ideas out there and says that he's going to work with CBIC to deliver a certain type of development there. Well, we don't believe that, because the LMP's track record with CBIC is an increasingly bad one. That's an organisation that's wholly owned by the ratepayers of Brisbane. Collectively, ratepayers own that, a hundred percent of that. But all of these assets, all of these council assets have been transferred to CBIC at the same time that they are divesting of profit-generating assets held in the private market. So as they're selling off, as they're selling off profit-generating assets, whether they're interstate or here in Queensland, where you get private rent from them, and that rent is then passed on to council and ratepayers as a dividend, they've been divesting of them quietly over the last few years. They have been running down their cash reserves over the last few years, and to the point now where CBIC's books are padded out with council-owned facilities, of which council's paying rent on and receiving only a portion back as a dividend. Libraries, business centres, works depots, these are the types of things that you would think a council owns and operates, because a council should have a focus on service delivery, whether that's the public face of council at a business centre, whether that's a library, whether that's a works depot. But we know, under the LMP, they won't be needed for much longer, given the number of staff that the LMP is sacking. And according to the LMP and the Lord Mayor, contract staff are second-class citizens, second-class staff, according to him. That's what he said earlier. They are not council staff, therefore, he doesn't mind sacking them on Christmas Eve. He has absolutely no problem in doing that. That's what the Lord Mayor said. He has no issues. And we understand why, Chair, we understand why the LMP have gone down this road so ferociously over the last couple of years.
Point of order, Chair.
In creating two classes of workers and councillors.
Come on, settle down.
Chair, two relevance in the report. This is not a rehash of question time, and councillor Cassidy's opportunity for his own answer back. This is to talk to the report and the contents contained within the report.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. I tend to agree. Councillor Cassidy, can I draw you back to the-
Yes, I can.
Can I draw you back to the contents of the report, please?
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. So CBIC, who's getting his land, holds works depots, which contractors and council staff work out of. Just using that as an example for some context for councillors here who are making this decision about whether to transfer this land to CBIC to develop into what potentially will be high-end housing, which will drag up market prices and not deliver anything in terms of genuinely affordable housing. And again, there was a unique opportunity, a unique opportunity. I've suggested some sites to the Lord Mayor, which council could purchase and work with community housing providers and increase the density on those sites, lift height limits in Sangate, and they just treat it as a joke, those suggestions. And then, when they had it on silver platter, a silver platter in front of them, Chair, this council-owned site that's zoned for residential living, they squib it. The Lord Mayor wouldn't pick up the phone to Q Shelter or any of those community housing providers and ask what the best way forward to use this land to genuinely address the housing crisis here in Brisbane. No, no, no. Just give it to CBIC as a bit of a plaything.
Councillor Cassidy, I've given you a little bit of wide scope here, but I will draw you back to the report, please.
Of the disposal of land to CBIC for development.
You're putting into context something that happened outside of this report. Can you please come back to the report?
Well, yeah, thanks very much, Chair. We will not support this today, because this is not good value for money for ratepayers, given CBIC's use of ratepayers' money. This is not a good outcome in terms of housing when it comes to addressing the housing crisis. There are much better options on the table, but while you have the LMP in charge, this is what we have come to expect. These kinds of outcomes, after twenty-long years, they're out of puff, they're out of ideas, they just do what's easiest, what's the path of least resistance, and it's a bad outcome for the people of Brisbane. Clause C, the annual operational plan. So this is, according to the Lord Mayor, the document which was supposed to give all the answers as to what the four hundred million mistakes he made was, this threadbare document before us today. This was supposed to give all of the answers as to what went wrong, and the Lord Mayor listed off a couple of things. Yeah, apparently, none of it was his fault. Apparently, listening to the Lord Mayor, it was all somebody else's fault. He did confirm that all of the QRA funding, which was required for the rebuilding of flood damage assets, was given, that was fully accounted for. He confirmed that without quite saying it, but he did. But he said further things, further things to the tune of fifty million dollars on top of that weren't supported. So, okay, there's fifty million dollars of extra things, not basic council ongoing services, but there's fifty million dollars that they account for. And then he rattled off a couple of other things that tallied up to tens of millions of dollars, which certainly doesn't get us to the four hundred million at all, which should be identified in this document here, because this was the trigger, for the four hundred million dollars in cuts. Then he said the biggest one, the seventy million dollars, which would be targeting staff, targeting services and staff, so cuts to council staff, seventy million dollars worth, cuts to services, cuts to basic maintenance in the suburbs, whether that's tree trimming or footpath work or potholes or road resurfacing. So that's still, that's the biggest one that he mentioned, but there's still a big black hole there, Chair, because what he's mentioned is about a hundred and fifty million dollars worth in those things of cuts, but there's still two hundred and fifty million dollars gone missing, and the Lord Mayor still cannot answer that question.
Just one moment, councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Point of order, Chair. Move for an extension.
Second.
We have a motion for extension moved by councillor Collier, seconded by councillor Griffiths. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy, you've got the call.
Thanks very much, Chair. So when you go through here, you know, Programme Three, Four, Five and Six, capital expenditure is below budget. So Lord Mayor made that strange claim in his contribution earlier, that capital expenditure was way up, but revenue was way down, but that's actually not reflected in here at all, except there is one exception. There is one exception, and that's Programme One. So we know that the metro blowout and the blowout on the Green Bridges programme has blown the entire budget. That's the reality of what we've got here today, because capital expenditure in Three, Four, Five and Six is down to the basic, small projects around the city, basic maintenance around the city services, like mosquito spraying, grass cutting, waste services, programmes, free trees, all that sort of stuff. So expenditure is down in those areas, but it is way up in the areas of which we know there are huge, huge and publicly confirmed blowouts in the budget on the metro and the Green Bridge programme. And once this LMP's Victoria Park project starts to come online in this budget in the next quarter, I presume, we're going to start seeing blowouts in Programme Three, because every major project they undertake has major cost blowouts on it. After twenty, twenty-long, twenty-long years, everything that this Lord Mayor touches that is a major project has billions of dollars of blowouts on it. So the review that we have before us today confirms that, and what the Lord Mayor said-
Councillors, please.
-confirms that there was extremely poor planning, extremely poor planning. The Lord Mayor confirmed that his administration didn't anticipate inflation. He said that there was no early planning work on projects, because they didn't realise that they had to relocate services and what the costs of those would be. Ding, ding, ding. Do we remember Kingston Smith Drive? A hundred million dollar blowout on that project, because they didn't do the early work? Because council had hollowed out, the LMP had hollowed out council's engineering capabilities to be able to do that early work. So all of a sudden, they go headlong into a project and they find out that it's ten or twenty or thirty million dollars more on one road project, a billion dollars more on the metro project, absolutely true to form. So the single biggest cost to ratepayers, and this isn't just programme-wide, this is project-wide, the single biggest cost to ratepayers is the metro. And the Lord Mayor tries to cover that by saying that it's, you know, new stages that are being brought online, which is why the budget's being blown. Well, what we know is that those extra stages are coming online and blowing the budget, because the entire project, the entire project is a billion dollars over budget. So when you look at individual projects- So when you look at individual projects, the Brisbane Metro is the single biggest cost to ratepayers and it is double, double the next item along there, which is flood resilient suburbs. That's the next biggest one, so, and that's half of it. It's $120 million on the Brisbane Metro and $60 million to be spread across 190 other suburbs to make them more flood resilient. And road resurfacing, just $15 million, just $15 million for suburban road resurfacing. So we know why, we know why the Lord Mayor has blown the budget. It is poor financial management on his part. He is reducing expenditure in the suburbs of Brisbane. He is increasing council taxes and he said they're increasing slightly less. He said there's a $7 million less in taxes that this LMP council is taking from the people of Brisbane. So instead of $113 million in increased council taxes this year, it's going to be $107 million in increase in council taxes. So he's taking more from the ratepayers of Brisbane, $107 million more this financial year than they were paying last financial year, but he's spending $400 million less on council projects, council services and council staff. I couldn't quite believe it when the Lord Mayor said that apparently council has no control over staff levels in areas like asphalt and aggregate area in council and field services. He said they had no control there because those agencies, those labour hire agencies hire and fire at their will. But then he went on to say council just simply adjusts the hours they allocate to those staff. So if the LMP adjusts the hours they allocate to dozens and probably hundreds of agency staff from 40 hours a week to zero hours a week, according to the LMP, that's not a cut. But I think if you put that to any ordinary person out in the suburbs of Brisbane, they would know that that is a cut. That when those road crews that are seeing, in one instance I've heard 17 full-time people leave that road crew that does potholes and road resurfacing and they're now saying they're going to have to do a whole lot less in maintenance because of these cuts the LMP have made, I think people know they are cuts. That's not a simple adjustment to hours, that is a cut to staff and that is a cut to basic council services.
Councillor Cassidy, sorry, I'm just questioning whether what you're saying was in this annual report under item C, whether it had occurred within the first quarter, because that's what we are debating, the first quarter, not the second quarter.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. So $100 million in carryovers from last year's budget into this document here, this first quarter, $100 million in carryovers, we've had confirmed today as well. So not only did they underspend on projects last year that weren't done, they carried them over into this budget, $100 million in basic suburban projects and they're all cut now as well. It's not only your rates going up, but the carryovers are being cut and projects that were promised by LMP councillors is being cut as well. And I know in going out and talking to communities this weekend out in, doing a bit of door-knocking in Banyo and Bald Hills too, people identify that when they pay their rates, they expect a certain level of service from council. But at the moment, they're identifying they're getting a lot less, they're getting a lot less under this LMP administration, whether it's being, you know, eaten alive by swarms of mosquitoes or seeing council's maintenance at Bald Hills or the creek, which is the only drainage those people have, winding back year after year after year. People know they're paying more and getting less and, and these documents before us today confirm that. Not amount of spin from the Lord Mayor is going to change that. And I know the Lord Mayor said he likes to go and talk to people out in the suburbs. I know while we were out there door-knocking and talking to people in the suburbs, I know the Lord Mayor was at Gina Ryanhardt's house over the weekend, rubbing, rubbing, yeah, really in touch with the people of Brisbane there, rubbing shoulders with the.
This is not relevant to the report that's before us.
Yeah, some residents, some residents. Yeah, a select few residents the Lord Mayor talks to in his role. So I think, I think the LMP need to actually get out there and start knocking on a few doors and talking to people because this little bubble that they're living in, little tiny little bubble, means that they have become totally out of touch. If the Lord Mayor can walk in here and say, oh, well, $400 million is sensible, sacking hundreds of staff is sensible, then I, I, you know, I think he's, I'll leave it at out of touch, entirely out of touch, because I don't want to be too rude in saying things in here, but it is just absolutely.
Councillors, please, councillors, councillor Cassidy, you've got the call.
It's just absolutely incredible how out of touch this LMP administration is, Chair.
Can I bring you back to item C though? We are, you are debating item C.
Yes, that's right, yes. So the Lord Mayor confirmed that his administration has lost the ability to plan, they can't plan for a budget year ahead, they can't even plan for 12 weeks, Chair. They can't even plan for the next 12 weeks because that's all that budget lasted. They can't plan on major projects because we're seeing poor planning resulting in major blowouts and major delays and now hundreds of millions of dollars of rates increases each and every year that this Lord Mayor is levying on the people of Brisbane to pay for these mistakes. People aren't going to forget this and we'll make sure they won't because we're out there talking to people and talking the facts, not the spin like the LMP do. They like to pretend everything is perfect out there. But these cuts really do affect people's way, way of life out in the suburbs of Brisbane. Brisbane is a great city, Chair. We have amazing, unique neighbourhoods with all their own stories to tell, but they're being badly let down by this LMP administration of councillors who are more interested in themselves and their party than they are in representing their communities. And this document before us today confirms that.
Thank you. Further debate. Councillor Cunningham.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on all items before us. First to item A, Mr. Chair. Council has approximately 100 leases to telecommunications carriers across Brisbane for their facilities. Despite the fact these carriers have considerable federal legislative rights under the Telecommunications Act to use and occupy land for their facilities, the carriers have negotiated and agreed to financial terms and conditions and entered into leases with council to occupy their land for these purposes. There are currently 18 leases with Vodafone, Telstra and Optus at various sites which have expired or are due to expire in the next 12 months. The carriers have continued to occupy some sites under the holdover provisions of these lease arrangements pending renewal of these leases, the negotiations for which have now been concluded with council officers. To continue to offer telecommunications services to the residents of Brisbane and equipment for broadcast services and emergency services, both TPG Telecom and Telstra have made arrangements for the tower infrastructure providers Wavecon and Ampatel as trustee for the tower's Business Operating Trust to also enter into these leases. The proposed commercial terms for the renewal of these leases are for 10 years at rents in accordance with a valuer's market rent assessment, increased annually by 3% on the anniversary of the commencement date. Two of these sites are on land for which council is the trustee and therefore council will also now be required to obtain approval from the Queensland Government represented by the Department of Resources to renew leases for these sites. Mr. Chair, on item B, which is the surplus property disposal at Wakely. This item seeks council approval for the sale of 704 New Cleveland Road, Wakely to CBIC. The site is zoned as emerging community and was acquired by council for the now completed Tilly Road and New Cleveland Road intersection upgrade project. Importantly, and I really want councillors to listen carefully, CBIC has identified an opportunity, a unique opportunity, and I see the leader of the opposition actually doesn't care to understand some of the facts behind this. He has just walked out of the chamber, Mr. Chair. CBIC has identified a unique opportunity for residential improvements on the land incorporating specialist disability accommodation. CBIC has a very, very strong track record in delivering this type of accommodation for some of the most vulnerable people in Brisbane. This is a much-needed type of accommodation, Mr. Chair, and it's currently being delivered in East Brisbane and at Everton Park in partnership with Young Care. CBIC have the runs on the board when it comes to providing this type of accommodation. I'm astounded that Labour will not support the, the building of specialist accommoda, specialist accommodation in Brisbane. Quite frankly, it's quite upsetting.
Just, just one moment, councillor Cunningham. Point of order, councillor Murphy.
Will councillor Cunningham take a question?
Councillor Cunningham, would you be kind enough to take a question from councillor Murphy?
All right, councillor Murphy.
Councillor Murphy, through the Chair.
Councillor Cunningham, in your view, has councillor Cassidy embarrassed himself and the Labour team through the position that he's taken today?
Absolutely, he has. Thank you councillor Murphy. It is embarrassing that they will not support the building of specialist accommodation here in Brisbane. This submission seeks approval for council to deal with CBIC on the site.
Just one moment, councillor Cunningham. Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I seek your advice on this matter. None of what councillor Cunningham is saying is in the report and in fact, we were given very strict instructions that all of the requirements around this were commercial in confidence, including no public announcements or press releases are to be made unless otherwise agreed between the parties. So I'm just wondering whether or not councillor Cunningham is breaching her confidentiality obligations, given these issues she's talking about are not in the report and there are very specific requirements in the attachments given to us today.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Just give me one moment, please. Councillor Johnson, in relation to my ruling, the items that are marked commercial in confidence are done so in the document and therefore councillor Cunningham has not spoken around those docu, those sections of the document that are marked commercial in confidence.
Okay, point of order, Mr. Chair. Well, I refer you to the addendum of commercial in confidence items and I believe it's probably attachment C and it's the sec, it's the document dated the 6th of October 2023 and under confidentiality it says the HOA, the purchase price and all communications regarding, and then lists all of the arrangements, communications, announcements, et cetera. So to me, that would mean that all of the arrangements that CBIC have entered into with its commercial partners would be considered commercial in confidence. And that material that councillor Cunningham is, is referring to is not in any of the material that we've been provided with. So I am very concerned that she is providing information that she has access to that may be in breach of that confidentiality agreement.
Sorry, councillor Johnson, can you just repeat where you're referring to again?
So it's in the document marked addendum, commercial in confidence information. I believe it's attachment C, heads of agreement, and it's the second page, it says 12 confidentiality.
Is that where it says on paragraph 16?
No, paragraph 12. Don't know about paragraph 16, don't know what you.
I am not going to uphold your point of order, councillor Johnson, but I will, thank you, but I will ask councillor Cunningham to make sure that she stays within the confines of commercial in confidence.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. And what I was referring to were other examples where CBIC had worked with Young Care, for example at East Brisbane and Everton Park. Mr. Chair, it's interesting, isn't it, to hear those comments from the great defender of the Labour Party? But I would once again point out to all councillors who have said that this is some kind of behind closed doors deal, that is simply outrageous. We're here today talking about it, giving councillors the opportunity to understand what is happening here. It's so closed, it's so behind closed doors that here we are in a public forum talking about it, Mr. Chair. Now, it's true that the CBIC dividend is lower this year, market, market conditions have factored into that, but I will say this, the dividend is still over $9 million more than zero. Because zero is the amount that ratepayers would receive if Labour were in charge of this place. They didn't support CBIC when it was set up, they wanted to spend all the cash and run, Mr. Chair. But instead, this side of the chamber, we took a responsible approach and as well as growing assets, we've seen $190 million in dividends returned to the ratepayers of Brisbane. From initial seed funding of just $135 million, CBIC has grown this into a $364 million portfolio of assets under management. I want to remind the chamber, in financial year 22, CBIC delivered an overall, overall return of 13.8%. Now, let's just compare the pair, as they say. A return of minus 1.2% happened in the same year by the Commonwealth's Future Fund. And in financial year 23, CBIC also outperformed the industry benchmark return by 1.6%. From inception, CBIC has delivered an average return of 11%, once again outperforming the long-term benchmark. Brisbane residents shouldn't take financial advice from the Labour Party, or the Greens for that matter. CBIC's independent experts are some of the best in the business, Mr. Chair, and it's laughable that the Labour Party think they know better. When it comes to rental payments, principles of full cost pricing require council to account for equivalent rental costs for all sites occupied by council, even if they are owned by council, Mr. Chair. So if CBIC were dissolved and the assets sold off in a fire sale, which is what Labour would do, council would still require the facilities and the equivalent rent would still need to be booked in our accounts, but ratepayers would not be benefiting from the dividend from CBIC. That is the clueless and the destructive approach of those opposite, Mr. Chair. On item C, this is the quarterly financial report. The first budget, bless you, the first budget review figures have been used for this report. It includes the statements of comprehensive income, financial position, changes in equity and cash flows after the first three months of the financial year. Across council, the report shows that in the first quarter, revenue is below budget and our capital expenditure is above budget. Our operating costs are also under pressure at this time. Costs are rising by more than all the experts predicted when the budget was developed six months prior, Mr. Chair. Inflation has remained higher for longer despite previous forecasts that it would decline to 4.75% over 22, over 2023. Mr. Chair, the November RBA statement of monetary policy confirmed that while inflation in Australia has passed its peak, it's still too high and is providing more persistent returns than expected a few months ago. They went on to say that the updated forecasts have inflation in Australia higher in the near term and taking a bit longer to return to the top of the bank's target range. Mr. Chair, these are tangible examples that are happening in the Australian economy. In the past six months alone, official figures show. In the past six months alone, official figures show cement is up 10.4%. Electricity is up 4.6%. Postal costs are up 11.9% and things just keep getting more expensive. As the Lord Mayor has outlined, we've also taken a hit due to a number of QRA claims being unsuccessful. $50 million of Brisbane Betterment and Recovery projects, including for road resurfacing projects, were rejected by the Queensland Reconstruction Authority.
Councillor Cunningham, your time has expired. Further speakers?
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Seconded.
We have a motion for a 15-minute afternoon tea break. Moved by councillor Hutton, seconded by councillor Jenkinson. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any further speakers? Councillor Johnson?
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak briefly on the ENC report. All three items. I'd like to start briefly with item B. I found it fascinating listening to the Finance Chairman talk about this item because there's two things that happened. Firstly, she was entirely critical of the leader of the opposition, who was not in the chamber, but failed to mention the Lord Mayor giving his speech and then leaving the chamber, which he does most weeks and never comes back. So no doubt her criticism applies equally to the Lord Mayor, who couldn't be bothered to turn up and participate in the meeting this afternoon on the items that he's moved.
Councillors, please. Councillor Johnson to the report.
Yes, thank you. That was councillor Adams and councillor Murphy for those at home who are not being named for interjecting. But the Lord Mayor is not present. He's not here. But the second and more concerning thing is the criticism by the Finance Chair of the leader of the opposition about things that are not in the report. Now, the Finance Chair went into a lot of detail about how the sale of this land was for disability housing. And she specifically mentioned Young Care multiple times. And none of that is in the report before us today. So if that is the case and that is what this is for, why is it a secret? Why is a good initiative like supporting a disability housing provider for young people, Young Care, why is that a secret? Now, the only reason I could think that that would not be publicly disclosed is because there is some confidentiality around it. Now, that seemed to be what was in the commercial in confidence material here, but I've been told it's perfectly okay for us to talk about it. So the Finance Chair has disclosed information that wasn't provided to all councillors. She has then criticised councillors for saying all the information is before us when clearly it's not. We also are under extreme confidentiality requirements with regards to the amount of money for this transaction. We're not allowed to mention that to you. So not only is this LNP administration not being transparent about the end use of this land, they're not being transparent about the cost and the return to council. And that is very problematic. Because, and this is my biggest concern with this, normally when there is the disposal of land, we see a valuation report for the land. No valuation report has been provided to councillors in the materials before us today. So we don't know whether or not the transfer of land for the secret price that councillor Cunningham says is perfectly open and available, but it's a secret, I'm not allowed to mention it. And she didn't mention it either. So we don't know whether that represents a fair or actual market price for the land. We don't know. And what we do know is that this council has given land to the CBIC and then the CBIC have sold it off. We are not seeing a return on those proceeds. So we don't know whether or not council will end up being, you know, a good beneficiary of this outcome. Because we don't know what the land's actually worth. We don't know whether or not if it went to the open market, it would have got more. None of us knew until councillor Cunningham let the cat out of the bag that this was for a disability housing provider. But presumably, there are others out there.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, councillor Cunningham.
Claim to be misrepresented.
Noted. Thank you. Councillor Johnson, you've got the call.
I think she well and truly let the cat out of the bag, Mr Chairman. But, yep, yep, she did, multiple times.
Councillor Johnson to the report, please.
Yes, yes, I'm definitely speaking to the report pretty clearly. So the big issue here, of course, is we don't know whether this represents a value-for-money transaction. We don't know what the fair value of the land is because no reports have been provided before us today. We don't know the exact end use, other than what councillor Cunningham has told us, and we're not allowed to talk about the value of the return to council. Does that sound like a very open and transparent way to conduct the disposal of council assets? No, I don't think it does. If this was for a good cause and a good purpose, that has not been made clear to councillors and is not on the public record. And in fact, councillor Cunningham then walked back what she said. It's just like Young Care, not necessarily is Young Care. So it's all very confusing, isn't it? We think this land is being sold. We don't know whether it's a fair price. It might be being sold to Young Care, it might not be. Oh, I'm sorry, sold to the CBIC for use by Young Care, it might not be. That's not confidential, of course. So this is how the LNP rolls. This is why every time this happens, there are problems with the way in which the LNP deliver projects in this city. I don't necessarily understand why the LNP has done this. And I think it's probably to make some fancy announcement at a later point, which unfortunately councillor Cunningham has just rung that bell. So, look, I'll be abstaining on this item simply because, for me, I need to know that this is a fair transaction that is value for money for ratepayers. And council's failure to provide any kind of market valuation is extremely problematic and is abnormal. Every time we have land acquisition disposal, we get those valuations and that's not been provided today. That lacks transparency and it lacks accountability. And based then on the Finance Chairman's inopportune comments today, you know, this may well be for a good cause, but we wouldn't actually know because it's not disclosed in the report before us today. Finally, on item C, the operational plan and quarterly report for the first quarter. What a stunning document this one is. So we now know that there are $100 million in carryovers. I'm guessing probably some of the carryovers are actually going to be cut in the second budget review that's coming forward. But looking at this botched budget, from day one, the budget the Lord Mayor brought to this council chamber was unreliable. It was completely uncosted. It was unprofessional. And it has left this city in a dire circumstance where they don't know if their projects are continuing or not. We know that the LNP are fundamentally unable to announce what's in the budget and then deliver those budget projects. We've seen, I've been here 15 years, and we have seen all the Finance Chair people. Adrianne, councillor Shrinna, councillor Adams, councillor Shrinna, oh, sorry, councillor Simmons, and councillor Cunningham, and councillor Allen. They're all in the same boat. They've all presided over budgets that are highly unreliable and they are unable to deliver on even their most basic promises. Now, here's the big issue, and I agree with councillor Cassidy in some of the things that he said earlier today. If you look at this budget review and you listen to what the Lord Mayor had said, you would think there are massive cost blowouts right across the council budget. But clearly, that is not the case. Clearly, in areas like transport for Brisbane, we've got capital and operating expense cost blowout. We've also got expenses up in, where are we, above? Community and lifestyle, but capital's below. But in most of the programmes, expenses are below what is budgeted. So this council's actually not spending money above what it has. So the big question becomes, as we all knew, as we all knew, it is a few major projects, namely the Brisbane Metro, the Kangaroo Point Bridge, Mogal Road, and no doubt a few others, that have blown out because of the LNP's incompetent project management, project scoping, budgeting, contracting, all of these things, all of these things. And they shake their heads and go, it's not me, I didn't do it, I'm not responsible. Yes, they are responsible. They were elected. They hold positions of trust and authority in this administration. And yet they fail to follow through and make sure there is rigor and accountability in the way that council finances are being managed. Now, we know that every single year...
Councillor Johnson, your time has expired.
Damn it.
Councillor Cunningham, your misrepresentation, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. Councillor Johnston said that I had revealed information about specialist disability accommodation that was not in the papers. In actual fact, Mr Chair, it is in the papers. It's line 15 of the ENC report. CBIC has a strong track record of working with Young Care in the past, like they have at other locations. Thanks, Mr Chair.
Thank you, councillor Cunningham. Further speakers?
Just briefly on the ENC report, Chair, and some of the debate that was had before. I just have to correct the record and it's important that every time the metro budget is mentioned, that we do correct the record on this. We've heard a number of figures from councillor Cassidy in this place about what the Brisbane Metro budget is.
Point of order.
Just one moment, councillor Murphy. Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Yes, just with respect to councillor Cunningham's comments there, I'm looking at section 15 of the report before us today and it certainly does not mention Young Care. So I'm just wondering if she has a different document to us because she's just said it is in the report in paragraph 15, but certainly it's not in there that I can see. Can you clarify whether it is in there, Mr Chairman, or whether councillor Cunningham has a different document to us?
Councillor Johnson, I'm just going to have to get back to you on that one. In the meantime, can I let councillor Murphy continue? Councillor Murphy?
Thanks, Chair. So we have heard, we have heard in the past year a staggering amount of different figures that the metro project has blown out by from councillor Cassidy. You know, figures ranging from $944 million to $1.9 billion, $2.1 billion, $2.1 billion. He then has reduced the figure down to $300 million most recently. Now, today, we heard what I assume is the final figure that he will take to the election, which is that the metro budget has blown out by a staggering $1 billion, Chair, all of which are fake, all of which are fake figures that he just makes up in his head. And he gets redder and redder over there, telling these big porkies and his nose grows longer and longer every single time. Like Pinocchio, the dull come-to-life Chair, we just cannot believe what councillor Cassidy says as the bevy of mistruths that he peddles continues to grow and grow each and every time we come into this chamber. So I've been really clear in here. The budget was $1.24 billion. We have suffered $200 million worth of cost increases on the project. The budget is now $1.4 billion. That is the figure. That is the truth. And we cannot let councillor Cassidy's lies on this issue go unanswered.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
I presume you're going to take action against councillor Murphy for using the word that you are not allowed to use in this chamber and expel him.
Councillor Johnson, I'm the person who decides to leave the chamber or not, not you. Yeah, and have I ever expelled you? No. No, I haven't. Councillor Johnson, I'm the Chair of this chamber. You do not tell me what I should be doing.
I'm simply seeking a ruling, Mr Chair, that's all.
I am happy for you to seek a ruling, but do not tell me how to rule. Councillor Murphy, would you care to withdraw?
I'll withdraw, Chair. And I want councillor Johnson, Chair, she's reflected on each of the Finance Chairs that's been in that role since she started in this place. And I'll remind her that all of those Finance Chairs have been part of a team that has won successive elections on the back of responsible financial management, of which she is not a part of that team. And it's been a very long time since she has been welcomed in this team and thank God she has not been a member of it. That said, Chair, if we were so bad, if we were so bad, people would have voted us out, but we're not. And I don't want councillors on this side of the chamber to be disheartened by councillor Johnson's comments because the people of Brisbane see through the stuff that is peddled from those opposite. They don't see services being cut out in the suburbs. They don't see their parks getting worse. They don't see their footpaths getting worse or their roads degrading. They see services improving. They see a record investment in public transport. They see a record investment in active transport, more than the entire state government combined. And as they drive around the city, as they walk around the city, as they cycle and scoot around the city, they can see it happening everywhere. People with hard hats on, council logos on the sides of projects, bunting and banners. They can see the progress that this team is delivering for this city, that this Lord Mayor is delivering for this city. So that's why when they say the things that they say about our record in this place, they don't really ring true. And we don't pay any notice of it. And we'll continue to get on with the job that we've been given by the people of the city of Brisbane.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Councillor Johnson, your previous point of order, I do not uphold. And in addition to that, paragraph 15 does include the words specialist, sorry, disability accommodation. Such semantics is not needed. Further speakers? Further speakers? See nobody rising. Lord Mayor's not here for a write-up reply. We will now put item A of the report, councillors. Item A of the report. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we will now put items B and C.
Seconded.
Division call. Division called by councillor Allen and seconded by the Deputy Mayor. Eyes to my right, nose to my left, and I've done the same for this side of the chamber as well. Please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the vote being 23 in favour.
Thank you. Councillors, please return to your seats. We now put items B and C of the report. All of those in favour say aye. Those against say no. Division called by councillor Cunningham and seconded by, I think it was councillor Cassidy. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the vote being 17 in favour, five against, and one abstention.
Councillors, the reports have passed. Deputy Mayor, Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games. Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move the report of the Economic Development of Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 14th of November 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 14th of November 2023 be adopted. Deputy Mayor, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. What's on at business in Brisbane at the hub this week? We have got a couple of workshops coming up, in particular on the 23rd, what's that, two days' time, at 9.30. Harness the Power of Facebook Ads to Grow Your Business. That is being presented by Loom Marketing, our business expert. How to map your Facebook ads, make sure you're ready for ads, success metrics to measure and how to optimise and amplify your results. And then on the 27th of November, we have got Roof Chop Yoga, always very popular on a Monday night. The one-hour class is about movements, resting and posing for meditation. And joining this massive movement is always a good way to make sure that you are relaxed and ready for your work together. Then on next Tuesday at 9.30 in the morning, meaningful mental health initiatives for the workshop, for the workplace, being supported by Be Kinder to Yourself. It's about how to create a safe workplace, burnout signs, burnout signs of team members and simple and practical steps to boost and maintain good health. So great to see that we have got so many great workshops continuing right through till the end of the year with great feedback. We recently had the How to Market Your Business Masterclass by Staunch Digital. Some of the feedback that it was absolutely amazing. I've done a few marketing and social media type workshops in the past, but this one was mind-blowing in capital. So came home and immediately started redesigning my whole website landing page. So it's great that there's people really learning things out of these workshops and I hope that councillors are sharing it with their business communities to know that they're available and some of them online if they can't get to them in person as well. That is what was happening in the business hub last week. We had a very comprehensive presentation from the manager of economic development around what the ED team are doing to support local business right throughout the city and what they've been doing right throughout the year. So the focus of the ED team in council is community, connection and care. And all of their activities are based around making sure they're hitting one of those aspects of working with local businesses. So there is 5,000 members in our Brisbane Facebook group from 2020. And through those six pillars, there's a lot of content on that Facebook that we then expand into workshops. Support for business, local business showcases, events for business, precinct spotlights, external support for businesses and of course the community network, where people can share their questions and their answers and also their concerns. We launched the business app, Brisbane App in 2021, which is a one-stop destination of what to see and do. So it's a great free promotion app, particularly for those in the food and bev industry. And we have just recently included the Food Truck Initiative to promote those mobile businesses around the city as well. We've had the 18th year of the Lord Mayor's Business Awards recently, celebrating excellence and success. And then last Friday night, of course, the fantastic multicultural awards for business that the Economic Development Team do a lot of support through BEAT and Irma in that space as well. The Multicultural Business Sports Scholarship, the Business Hotline, the work with our business engagement team in CPAS, the Small Business Roundtable, the Suburban Business Hub in Nunda, the Maker Entrepreneurship Programme. All of these are activities that have been going on for many years now. And in the event space, we specifically been supporting initiatives like the Paddington Business Awards, the What We Make Design Markets at Balimba and the Young Entrepreneur Awards as well. That is just a touch, Mr Chair, of the amazing work that the ED team do in council to support our 93% of businesses in Brisbane that are small businesses. And again, I hope that councillors who in this place on the opposite side believe we do nothing are looking at the website and seeing how they can help their businesses to be the best that they can.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further speakers? Councillor Collier.
Thanks Chair. Just to this report, there was a lot of talk last week about supporting businesses in Brisbane. Lots of talk about council's commitments to the business community. And I just wanna share an anecdotal, real-life story about how council apparently supports businesses in my community. So as we all know, council projects have, can have a massive impact on operations of small and local businesses, especially when they're for things like capital works, say something like road resurfacing. So earlier this year in my ward, two small businesses were deeply impacted by council works and I'll note that they were done by those, you know, according to the Lord Mayor, second-class employees. It was, the works were carried out by contractors. And according to council, there were no problems whatsoever with this, with this project. There were no issues raised. Well, they raised it with me. There was no notice about being told about the project commencing. It was actually a letterbox drop the night before and if you're a cafe, you know, at night time, you're not there. So that really didn't help at all. And two small businesses, in fact, were completely unable to trade for a number of days. And one was shut actually for multiple days in a row. There was no apology from council. There was in fact crickets from council. Businesses had to throw out stock, they had to throw out furniture that was damaged. And so apparently this is how small business-friendly this council is. To top it off, there actually was an incident where a council contractor parked a vehicle in a community, a council leased facility space, didn't talk to anyone, just parked it in there on the night where they were having, they were bumping in like staging and things for their biggest fundraiser. So that had a huge impact and it was only resolved because I actually, you know, went down there, talked to the centre, had to call rapid response and at the time, you know, I was told, oh, this might take a couple of days to sort out. So this presentation covered how council apparently supports and promotes Brisbane's precincts as well. And I would say that is the opposite of support. This is what happens to small businesses who are run by families. They're genuinely good, hard-working people who have been forgotten by this council and they say there's nothing to see here. And while we're talking about support for businesses, let's talk about Oxford Street in Balimba. The Oxford Street Business Association has been relentless in their advocacy to council for more support from them. They see it happening in other areas, across the river and Racecourse Road. And they, they ask me, they say, please, what is, what do we have to do? We keep asking, how do we get any support from council? They would love to see a village precinct or Growing Precinct Together program. They've been calling on council for years and years for them to listen. Well, let me make it very clear, I stand with my local traders when this council ignores them. This LMP council says it's more business-friendly, but when it comes to supporting businesses in the suburbs, it's just crickets again.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thanks very much Chair. I rise to speak on the presentation, Support for Brisbane Businesses. It was called Support for Brisbane Businesses. And you think, okay, we went in, Deputy Mayor obviously hastily organised this one after we, I spoke about this the week before in council and I thought, okay, we'll finally get some answers what this LMP administration is apparently doing to support small businesses out in the suburbs of Brisbane. We're not talking about just the CBD, of which the deputy mayor said is her job in council is to just look after the CBD solely. We're talking about small businesses.
Just one moment councillor Cassidy. No, please continue councillor Cassidy.
You didn't hear that interjection then?
No, I didn't, sorry.
Oh, that's strange. So apparently there's a Facebook page, according to deputy mayor, there's 5,000 people in there, but extremely low levels of engagement. Some of those posts- That's right. Maybe they should direct some of, yeah, the other, the digital and Facebook advertising that this administration does advertise itself into, into small business support. But terribly low levels of engagement. Some of those posts from council get one or two engagements in there. Apparently there's a, there's a business award that they award themselves. There's a scholarship programme for a couple of people. There's the hotline, which is a very, that is a very handy source, absolutely. But that is a very good one. A single suburban business hub to service the 190 suburbs of Brisbane out of Nunda. Otherwise, you're gonna come into the CBD. A digital, an online toolkit and a digital toolkit. So the level of support of which the glossy brochures say and the deputy mayor says that small businesses out in the suburbs of Brisbane get and the reality is vastly, vastly different. Because when you get to the nub of it, when you get to the nub of it, Chair, the real level of support and engagement and interest by this LMP council for small suburban businesses is just that, they give them a toolkit, they call it. And in that, they say, here's some ideas or things you can do yourself. All the while making, actually, in reality, making it harder for those businesses to operate. And there are some real-life examples that I'll go through as well. So we know the LMP council likes to participate in those flashy inner-city events and promote all the things that happen in the inner city. The, yeah, the lobster and champagne and caviar and all that sort of stuff, which, which people who are of means, and we know the LMP rub shoulders with them because they're often at Gina Reinhart's house out there at Hawthorn. We know the set that they work, they work in closely with. But-
councillor Cassidy, can I draw you back to the report, please? I'm pretty sure Gina-
But when it comes to-
I'm pretty sure Gina Reinhart is not in the report.
Ah, she's a focus of the Lord Mayor's attention.
Yes.
But when it comes to support for small businesses out in the suburbs of Brisbane, outside the CBD and the valley and South Bank and South Brisbane, it's pretty, it's pretty threadbare. And I know talking to businesses and the deputy mayor said 93% of businesses operating in Brisbane are small businesses and, and the vast majority of those operate in the suburbs of Brisbane. Things that small businesses say they need support with from council, it's not, not the flashy, the digital toolkits and all that sort of stuff. That's, that, that is nice support to have when you do it properly. The LMP aren't even doing that. But they want council to be more of a partner in their growth and their success rather than a barrier of, which is how this LMP council is currently operating. Some of the small, normal, ordinary day-to-day things council could do to support small businesses in the suburbs of Brisbane is just getting the basics right. Chair, maybe fixing all those broken footpaths, maybe addressing parking concerns, drainage, parking management out in the suburbs, maintaining open spaces and investing in them, attracting people to those local communities, providing recycling services to small businesses rather than charging them extra and extra and extra for all those sort of things. Food licenses, we went through an example of that two weeks ago where incredibly, and I can tell you, this small business owner was furious at what the deputy mayor said about him. Where the deputy mayor called him lazy. He, the deputy mayor called that small business owner in Sangate lazy and I'm quoting-
Deputy Mayor.
And I'm quoting the deputy mayor there. You can go back and check the transcript. The deputy mayor said if that small business is too lazy to go and get their food licence inspections done, then that's their problem. That's what the deputy mayor said.
Point of, councillor Cassidy?
Point of order, I claim to be misrepresented. That is not correct.
So, I'll right to go.
Just one moment. Deputy Mayor, I don't think we can take a misrep from a previous meeting, but you're free to make comments and summing up. Councillor Cassidy, you've got the call.
Thanks very much Chair. So the reality of that situation is that small business owner worked extremely hard to meet all of council's requirements, ticked every single box, spent tens of thousands of dollars in investing in improvements to that premises, which they just rent, but they wanted to make that business a success, to meet every, tick every box. They were told they would get a food licence inspection for the star rating within nine months and 18 months has passed and it still hasn't happened. The reality for that small business is they have met all of the requirements of a five-star rating. They operate under a five-star rating standard at the moment, but council is artificially keeping them at a three-star rating and charging them more each and every year for their food licence. That's a bit fishy to me. When a small business meets all the requirements of a five-star rating, but they're being strung along year after year after year because we find out they have to pay council more in taxes. This LMP council taxes small businesses more by keeping them on a lower food rating, even though they are meeting every requirement. And for the deputy mayor to get up and call those hard-working small businesses lazy-
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order.
I find that highly offensive and I ask that he withdraw that comment or table the hand side. Table it. Because you'll see it is out of concept, I'm offended. I ask him to withdraw it.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, I would encourage you to withdraw your statement unless you can provide-
Yeah, no, we all have, I don't need to table it because councillors have provided those minutes. I will rely on that. I won't withdraw because what the deputy, I went and checked him after the meeting as well, Chair.
Thank you. Just one moment councillor Cassidy. Councillor Marks.
Yes, Mr Chair. I asked that councillor Cassidy withdraw the statement that he's inferring that council officers are deliberately behaving in corrupt behaviour by making sure that businesses are kept at a lower star rating artificially to ask for more money. I think that is, that's highly offensive, that's accusations of corrupt behaviour. And I asked that he either withdraw the statement or he puts that through to the CCC with evidence. Thank you.
Councillor, just one moment, please. Councillor Cassidy, councillor Marks is quite accurate. You are referring on the behaviour of council officers.
No, I never did. I said LMP very clearly.
You actually mentioned, you said officers. Just one moment councillor Marks, I would encourage you to withdraw.
Withdraw what?
The statement that council officers are deliberately-
Okay, I never said that, but if that, if anyone took that inference, I'll make it extremely clear, I'm not referring to council officers because I know there aren't enough of them. The resourcing that this LMP administration puts into that team means that they are run ragged trying to get this work done and they cannot get to these small businesses to get these inspections done. That's what I'm talking about. And if you don't know that through you, Chair, to councillor Marks, then you should go and start talking to some of these staff. They do not have the resources to be able to do these inspections when they need to happen. These small businesses then are paying through the teeth because this LMP administration is more interested in spending $2 billion on the metro than supporting small businesses out in the suburbs of Brisbane, Chair.
Councillor Collier.
And they laugh and laugh. We heard in this presentation from the team that on top of the Facebook page and the Facebook group that they've set up, that council is also managing the social media for valley traders as well directly. So not just giving, not just, I suppose, giving the digital toolkit like we heard to small businesses out in the suburbs, but council's actually doing the active management of that social media as well in promoting the valley and the city. We heard there were 667 events, 1,700 performances supported by council. That's great, but where is the support for suburban small businesses? Where are these events for suburban small businesses to draw people into them and the support? They just do not exist. We also heard that there were some, some programmes as well to make vacant properties more vibrant. So it's like the Brazilian thing, you just paint over the slums and they look a bit better, even though they, they continue, they continue to be, they continue to be vacant and those, those precincts, I suppose, aren't given the support to grow those small businesses that they need there. But we heard, we heard as well, there's this one, this thing in Banyo in Winham, the business partnerships, which is previously, the previous programme, the sum total of that was again a document that council handed to small businesses. The one that happened in Sangate was riddled with factual errors and riddled with spelling mistakes and that was it. Then council walked away from that community. They gave a document over and said, there you go, that's all the support you get while they continue to focus everything on the inner city of Brisbane. The suburbs of Brisbane are missing out under this LMP administration and Labour will do much, much better in administration.
Further speakers? Deputy Mayor, write a reply.
Well, four years of Economic Development Committee and he speaks for the first time with the outrage of those that are panicking about election in March and realise they'd better start thinking about small business. If councillor Cassidy's hypocrisy was not so- If councillor Cassidy's hypocrisy was not so blinding, I would say why hasn't he brought this up at any time in the last four years? Never, ever, ever.
Councillor Collier.
Ever.
Councillor Hutton.
Surprise, surprise, he has left the building because he doesn't want to hear it. Because the blatant mistruths that that man just spewed from his mouth were appalling. They were appalling. He did it through E and C for the Lord Mayor, he's doing it again now, it's what happens when nasty people get cornered. And that is where they are on that side of the chambers at the moment. Because I am going to say on behalf of every officer that works in the ED team, the business hub, through Irma and through the host city office, they work so bloody hard for this city and that performance was a disgrace. I'm going to say it and then I'll withdraw it, he lied through his teeth for 10 minutes. I will withdraw the comment.
Thank you.
There was blatant mistruths. And as for councillor Collier, I know she's only been here for a blink of an eye, but goodness knows it's a blink too long. We did the Local Business Partnership Initiative in 2022. This...
Councillor Collier. Just one moment Deputy Mayor. Deputy Mayor.
In this term of government, we did the Oxford Street...
Councillor Collier. I consider that you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct and in accordance with section 21.4 of Meetings Local Law, I hereby request that you refrain from calling out across the chamber. Deputy Mayor, you have the call.
In this term of government, we did the Local Business Partnership Initiative with the Oxford Street traders. We did a massive lights installation through the city, through the street of Oxford in 2021. We did an art installation of the little birds whose name escapes me at the moment. They weren't magpies.
Deputy, sorry, councillor Collier, stop. Deputy Mayor.
And because we have hundreds of these strip shops across the city, we cannot be spending our entire time continually with every strip shop that we've worked with. So therefore it is... Chair, I thought you were going to call her up.
No, I am, I am, I'm just making sure that I don't accidentally throw councillor Collier out of the room. Councillor Collier, I consider that you are still displaying unsuitable meeting conduct and in accordance with section 21.4 of Meetings Local Law 2001, I hereby request again that you refrain from calling out across the chamber. That is your last warning. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. We did a large light installation in 2021 that many, I'm sure there's many of us who would love to see down their main street, through their high street. We did the bird installations on top of the lights. And I just need to talk about the Stewart Street Road resurfacing. Again, this happened in July, but councillor Collier, being the good apparatchik she is with the ALP, has saved it up for the political debate, that's not really caring about your business. If it was that urgent, it really should have been brought up in, oh, I don't know when, July with the Chair, with me or with the infrastructure Chair, who had heard nothing about it as well. But the very clear understanding, when we went back and had a look at it, the letter was dropped to residents and businesses the 26th of June, three days before the profiling began, which is the practice. And then all works were day shift, parking was restricted within Stewart Street itself. Mind you, this is a road resurfacing, the things they're screaming for, for more, are now saying it's not good enough. There was no direct impacts on Oxford Street and full access to footpaths were maintained. Access to all off-street parking was maintained. A coffee shop was inquiring about access and one of our team leaders, I'm not sure if that's who councillor Collier is talking about, because guess what? She never told us, ever, that there was an issue. But the team leader spoke to that coffee shop on site and assured them that the people would be able to access the shop and no further concerns were raised. The only other incident of notice, which is the interpretation of the spin doctor for Minister Darth, which kind of explains it really, is that they parked in a community centre, well, what happened is the truck broke down and they couldn't get their roller out and they needed to park it in the car park. It was put near the community centre car park, they were told about it and it was removed as soon as possible.
Councillor Collier.
I do believe the louder you complain about something, the more you're concerned about how well it's going. They want us to partner in their growth and not be a barrier. That is what our Chamber of Commerce programmes are, 28 chambers that councillors go to, council officers go to every month for those that go to the chamber to talk to them. The vibrantly vacant that councillor Cassidy said we're doing because we couldn't get businesses off the ground, it is not our role to get businesses off the ground, but it is our role to help business centres absolutely make their centres look as good as possible. And if you're vacant because you're waiting for a development to happen on your site, that is a perfect opportunity to fill the windows with arts. And as for the green-eyed monster we see whenever we talk about the Valley or the city, which are also suburbs, aren't they councillor Howard? They are suburbs. MyValley.com, which is managed by Brisbane City Council, is funded by a levy of the business traders in the Valley. The businesses pay for that website above and beyond because they are interested in being involved. So councillor Cassidy wants to attack the MyValley.com website, he is attacking every business trader, and through you, Mr Chair, how many traders in the MyValley.com? Hundreds, hundreds councillor Howard, that contribute and work because we partner in their growth, whether they're in the Valley, whether they're in Oxford Street, whether they're in Kenmore Tavern where I was the other night, meeting with the traders there, or whether they are in the South West Corridor at Southside Chamber of Commerce. Councillor Cassidy's accusations of me saying a business is lazy is wrong, and I challenge him to table the hand side because I don't think he will be able to. He hid behind it, but they're very good at hiding behind things, they're very good at hiding in their offices when they don't want to hear the truth. The programme that the council officers deliver is second to none in South East Queensland, probably in Australia, which is why we are the most small business friendly city. And what they don't like on the other side is the people of Brisbane recognise that too. And we are proud of it and we will continue to do what we do because the barbs that are thrown from over there will be shown for exactly what they are: baseless, hollow and mistruths in March next year.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, we will now put the economic development...
Our point of order Chair.
Our point of order councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, it was two weeks ago, this is the deputy mayor, it's not whether your food is great or good or tasty or your service is superlative, it's about food safety, we make no apologies for the hardest working cafe, for the laziest cafe.
Councillor Cassidy, that's not a point of order.
Not getting a star.
Not...
Haven't complied.
Councillor Cassidy, that is not a valid, councillor Cas... Councillor Cassidy, that is not a valid point of order. Councillor Griffiths. That is not a valid point of order. You're rising on a point of order Deputy Mayor.
Point of order. I again ask councillor Cassidy, now he's just proved that I did not call his cafe lazy, that he withdraw that comment.
I don't believe councillor Cassidy is willing to withdraw. Deputy Mayor, we will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
All those against say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Seconded.
Division call by the deputy mayor and councillor Hutton, ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Jevy, ayes have it, the vote of me 23 in favour and one abstention.
Councillors, the report has passed. Councillor Griffiths, my eyebrows have come down for a drink. Councillor Murphy, Transport Committee, please.
Chair, I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 14th of November 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Jenkinson that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 14th of November 2023 be adopted. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and might I say, what a fetching moustache you are growing up there. I just noticed how well it's going.
Councillor Murphy.
Last week at the Transport Committee, we had a presentation from the head of Transport for Brisbane, Samantha Abadira, on bus driver recruitment now. I have spoken about CM's recruitment to council earlier in the year and the arrival of her expertise in transport operations honestly couldn't have come at a better time, Chair. Like many other industries, over the last 12 to 18 months, public transport, the public transport sector has faced some pretty massive challenges with recruitment and retention. The ongoing effects of COVID-19 along with the changing economic landscape have created a number of workforce shortages across the industry. Within the industry, these shortages have particularly affected the availability of bus drivers. So in the United States, 96% of public transport organisations, both publicly and privately owned, have experienced driver shortages and in Europe, over 80% of bus companies have found it difficult to fill positions. Closer to home, we know that cities like Auckland and Sydney have reduced their timetabled services sometimes by up to 20% because they didn't have enough drivers to complete shifts. And we weren't immune in Brisbane either, Chair. Earlier this year, we frequently faced situations where the service that we were providing exceeded the available supply of drivers and so we found ourselves with about 500 bus driver vacancies. We needed to increase the number of drivers in our workforce to keep up with the growing service demands and also to provide a buffer for unplanned absences. And one of the ways in which we dealt with the temporary bus driver shortage was to really increase the amount of casual and part-time bus drivers that were using the network and unfortunately we were burning out those drivers. So we were in a bit of a cycle of unsustainable human resource use, Chair. And so this has demanded a response from, from myself, from the leadership of Transport for Brisbane, that is exactly what has happened, Chair. We've taken a proactive approach and we are being acknowledged now around the country for a world-class approach to addressing this driver shortage. Firstly, we launched a major recruitment campaign, it seems to be the natural response that anyone would do with a driver shortage, so we launched a recruitment campaign to employ bus drivers and councillors might have seen this out and about in the suburbs. We've had recruitment signs on the back of buses, we've had front digital displays in buses that are not in service. We've also improved our digital presence, which was admittedly a weak point of Transport for Brisbane. Prior to CM's arrival was our digital presence, so we advertised, I think for the first time ever on LinkedIn, we used search engine optimisation and we made sure council was at the top of the list when searching for bus driver jobs in Brisbane, so beating out some of our private sector competitors in that space. We really simplified the application process so that we could encourage as many applicants as possible and removed a lot of the really annoying, you shouldn't have to fill out 38 different fields of information just to start the application, Chair, you should be able to get in there and make an application really quickly. So we've really simplified that application process and then we can increase our capacity to assess and train drivers so that they didn't sit within that application process for months and months and months. And Chair, I'm pleased to report to the chamber, this has been a resounding success. We've now on boarded more than 400 new drivers and we are on track to hit the 500 driver mark by the end of this year. We deliver 10,000 bus trips every day across the city, so having an additional 500 drivers on board really helps us to serve Brisbane residents and that has made a massive difference. And we've been able to do this without cutting our trips, without cutting the amount of services that we operate on a daily basis. So as a result though, of the increased driver availability that we have in the system, we now have a much improved service reliability, it's now running at 99.8%. And as I said in the chamber a few weeks ago, this means we're second only to Sydney Metro in terms of reliability. And we know that frequency and reliability are the two biggest factors when it comes to people choosing public transport, Chair. So it's no surprise that with this improvement in service reliability, we're also seeing a massive improvement in customer satisfaction, our CSAT scores. So these are now approaching national best practice in that space as well, Chair. So I want to say I'm incredibly proud of as well who we have recruited. And this latest round of recruits has higher numbers of women and higher numbers of culturally and linguistically diverse drivers than we have ever had through the training centre for Brisbane City Council. In our job ads, we made the very conscious choice to show the diversity of the existing workforce, the workers that we already have, and we've also reflected a range of different ages in the advertising that we've used. And that has been reflected back to us in the range and age of applicants who have applied to those positions. So we will continue, Chair, to recruit drivers to ensure that we can have a stable and most importantly, a sustainable pipeline of new drivers. Now that we've addressed that immediate shortfall, we have turned our attention to retention because, you know, we don't want to just be out there having to recruit all these drivers because we're losing them on the other side. And so we are looking at several different initiatives like transition to retirement programmes to make sure that Transport for Brisbane is not just an employer of choice, but the employer of choice for anyone seeking to drive a bus in this city. Chair, just briefly shifting gears to broader transport initiatives championed by the Shirena Council, I was very proud to say that one of our key active transport projects for this year has now been delivered. On the weekend, the Lord Mayor and councillor Landers opened the Bill Brown Reserve Shared Pathway in Fitzgibbon. This is three metres wide, along its one kilometre length. It's a shared path that takes advantage of a new alignment through the Bill Brown Sports Reserve. This improves connectivity between Telegraph Road and Rogan Road. It connects to the Brackenridge Skate Plaza, the Emily Seabom Aquatic Centre, of course, the very popular not-so-hidden world playground, the BMX facility and the dog park out there. And I understand that it was a fantastic opening, councillor Landers, and it was well attended by members of your community who very much appreciate that infrastructure. Because of course, Chair, this council and this team and this Lord Mayor delivers for the suburbs as equally as it delivers major projects that are important for the whole city. Chair, I don't have much more to say except for just acknowledging, I guess, that the last committee meeting was held this weekend, just to again thank the clerks for the fantastic work that they do in facilitating those committee meetings. I'll have more to say about a wrap-up for the term next week.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thanks, Mr Chair. I'd just like to speak to this report and particularly the presentation in relation to bus operators. I attended a rail bus and tram union delegation conference on Friday night and met with a number of drivers as well as organisers from the rail bus and tram union, including Peter Allen and Tom Brown amongst others. And of course, they have a very strong history in supporting our bus drivers and supporting the safety of our drivers in the city. I really want to praise our drivers, it's a remarkable job they do. They're really the frontline for us as a council in terms of representing and representing the delivery of service to residents, but also representing how Brisbane city treats residents. So I need to congratulate them for their work and... So I need to congratulate them for their work and commend them on the fact that they're doing such hard work, often with difficult customers sometimes, and on difficult routes and late at night and so forth. I was disturbed and almost disgusted when I heard some of the stories that they had to deal with in terms of their own safety. But one story really stuck out for me, and that was a lady who's been a driver for a number of years. I won't use her name. But she was assaulted at Carandale Shopping Centre, as I understand, and it was the last shift of the day. And several young people had got off the bus, and she went to close, they popped back on the bus, she went to close the door, and the young people actually spat in her face. And she was saying that the experience of having someone spit in your face is just horrific. And I really, I was just, I was quite shocked by it and quite disturbed, because I just think, I can't imagine doing your job. And the way she, the way many of the drivers spoke, they take a lot of pride in their work. They really enjoy communicating with people. They really enjoy delivering a service for Brisbane. I just thought it was very hard for her to have gone through that. And I think as a council, I just, I just think we have to keep improving driver safety. I acknowledge this isn't about a separate compartment, because she was actually walking around the bus. But it's sort of, I just don't think it's acceptable in this day and age that our drivers feel unsafe or are on sick leave because of incidents of safety that do occur in our buses. Just wanted that to be on the record. I'm having a, I'm catching up, we're going to the National Conference of the Rail Bus and Tram Union tomorrow night. And I look forward to meeting more members from not just across the state, but around the country as well. Our drivers do a great job, and we need to keep going back to the fact that they are really delivering on the front line for us. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Griffiths. Further speakers? Seen no one rising. Councillor Murphy?
Just briefly, Chair, can I just say in response to councillor Griffiths' comments that it is abhorrent that any bus driver or any council employee just out there doing their job, you know, would be assaulted for or attacked in any way. And we absolutely condemn and deplore anything like that. And it always pains me, just like councillor Griffiths when I'm talking to drivers, when they have that experience out there. We have to remember, these drivers complete eighty million trips a year for our city, ten thousand trips every day. There are so many people that they interact with on a daily basis who are going through all of their own personal issues, traumas, and who have their own lives. And it's, it is one of the unfortunate natures, but the realities of public transport, that our drivers do have to have so many interactions, and it only takes one of them to go wrong for that to unfortunately have significant impacts on that person's ability to go back to work the next day and do that. So we, of course, acknowledge, you know, the immense impact that bus driver assault has on our workforce. And we are doing, and we have made many, many steps, which I've spoken about in this chamber over the last few years, strides in order to protect our drivers in the job that they do. That work is not complete. It is ongoing, and we are fortunate to be partnering with the state government in delivering things like the full encapsulation barriers at the moment to a number of buses. Of course, the hopper safety guards, the roving patrols. And I must say, Chair, I did, I was heartened. I have two weeks in a row seen senior network officers getting on-board our buses outside City Hall. And that is the first time this entire term that I have seen that. So I think that is also fantastic, that we're seeing more of a visible presence of security, including police, including uniformed police. So I just think that is fantastic to see, and hopefully that gives our drivers some comfort that out there on the road, they are not alone.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. We will now put the report. All those in favour say aye. Those again say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday the fourteenth of November twenty twenty-three be adopted.
Seconded.
I think councillor Huang beat you, councillor Hutton, yes. It's been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday the fourteenth of November twenty twenty-three be adopted. Councillor Wines, you've got the call.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order. Councillor Collier?
Can I just ask that item B be taken seriously out of voting purposes?
Item B only. Thank you. Councillor Wines, you've got the call.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to rise briefly to make some general points about the infrastructure operations in the city at the moment. So can I begin by recognizing the excellent work, the vision of the Queensland Investment Corporation to engage meaningfully in the Northside Tunnel project? Now, as all councillors would know, this council has been a thought leader in how best to tackle traffic congestion on the Northside. All through twenty, the current year twenty-two and the early parts of this year, we provided the state government with a whole range of material. They have, initially, they rejected it. They called it a humiliating and feeble and low-quality work. Within three months, they have announced a thirty-five million dollar project through the QIC called the North Brisbane Infrastructure Project. Can I recognize the councillor Parry, before even her maiden speech was a hundred percent behind, battling traffic congestion in her community? And I know that it's been an exciting thing to be able to talk about such a large project. And also for the arrival of councillor Parry has generated some excitement in the Northside as well. I note that on the day of her pre-selection, the Labor councillors chose to go door-knocking in the area of the North Brisbane, the North Brisbane Tunnel. And in that, we see Mr. Darren Mitchell, who is, of course, running against councillor Parry, say it was an awesome morning door-knocking the residents in Marchant. But I looked at the photographs, Mr. Chair, and it just, there was something about the photograph that bothered me, because the image that Mr. Mitchell put up.
Just one moment, just one moment, councillor Wines.
Don't have to say it. It's relevance. It's nothing in the report about door-knocking or anything else.
Just one moment, please, councillors. Councillor Strunk, councillor Wines has the right, as the Chair of Infrastructure, to talk around the world regarding his own portfolio.
So the image itself actually has Gimpy Road in it, which is, of course, what we're talking about. But the image bothered me, because you can see JB Hi-Fi over his shoulder, and it just didn't sit right with me. And I had to check where this street, Sydney Street, and JB Hi-Fi are in Brisbane. And can I, and can I tell you, Sydney Street, where Darren Mitchell is door-knocking, is in which ward, councillor Allen? It's in Northgate Ward. Now.
Councillor Mark.
I have no, you know, poor old Darren does a couple of clangers every now and then. I hope that he, in future, door-knocks in his own ward.
Just, just one, councillor Wines, just one moment, please. There is too much chattering. Councillor Wines, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I noted councillor Griffiths said that there were Labour candidates door-knocking, one of which was door-knocking in Capera. I hope for that particular candidate's sake it was the right side of the road, because as we know, Capera is split. Hopefully, she didn't do the same as Mr. Mitchell and go door-knocking for himself in Northgate Ward. Now, I know that this particular item has been particularly interesting to one particular state MP. That's, of course, Mr. Bart Melish, who was one of the leaders in calling our project humiliating. And then within weeks, within weeks of him calling our project humiliating, he has, he has announced how wonderful it is that we're doing it. And then this, this last week, just bear with me, that's, of course, Mr. Melish calling our project humiliating. And then here he is, taking a swing at the Lord Mayor, saying that we, accusing us of not spending a dollar on the project and wanting to bulldoze the North West Transport Corridor. And this is my favourite line, a bit of honesty goes a long way in politics. It's excellent advice. What do they say? It's good advice that Bart just can't take. I would strongly recommend that Mr. Melish consider, considers being more honest about this project. This is part of the council's vision for the Northside. We have spent quite a deal.
Just, just one moment, councillor Wines. Point of order, councillor Murphy.
Will councillor Wines take a question?
You're asking a lot of questions, sir, aren't you, councillor?
Very curious, Chair. Councillor Wines, which minister was it that did in fact want to build a surface rail corridor through the North West Transport Corridor, Trouts Road?
Councillor Wines?
That is, of course, the embattled and enfeebled Minister Mark Bailey, who I cannot believe that a minister of his standing can get so much bad press. Every time he steps in front of a camera, he gets a negative story. But it was, it is a hundred percent, and this is where Mr. Melish has to be honest with the public, it is one hundred percent the state government's intent to bulldoze that bushland and build a heavy rail line. You can read about it in the South East Queensland Regional Plan Infrastructure Supplement. It is very, very small. The map is very, very small, but it is there. And so I think Mr. Melish should take his own advice, and just a little bit of honesty would go a long way about what his, what the government, of which he is an assistant minister, is intending to do. Heavy rail with very few stops, right through the middle of McDowell, right through the middle of, right through the middle of Richmond Downs. That is absolutely the proposal that he is pretending is not real while it's being published within their work. Now, the accusation, of course, that we haven't been, that, there is an accusation coming, I know, because I know what Minister Bailey's like, I know what Bart Melish is like, I know what Jimmy Sullivan's like. They will make some sort of outrageous claim in the future that we have not been cooperative. So I will be tabling a letter here from Ms. Tanya Orr to Mr. Daniel Sheverden outlining which documents would be made available. The list of all of the work that we've done has been sent. I'll be tabling that. Thank you, Billy. To make sure that this council knows that we are already engaging without being invited. We are trying to offer the substantial work that we've already done to the state to make sure that this project gets the best outcome possible. Because that's really what it's about. We want to make sure that in the end, the project is as best as it can be, and the people of Brisbane benefit as much as possible. That's really what this is all about. Now, the fact that some of the state members are trying to distance the fact that we call this, the project that they call the Gimpy Road Bypass Tunnel is what we called the eastern alignment option of the North West Tunnel system, that they're actually haggling with us over who thought of it first. Well, it doesn't really matter who thought of it first, but I can assure you, councillor Mark, it was us. It was us who thought of it first. And I'm, but, but we, and I do hope that when the state builds this project, that they think of it best when it's, when it is completed. Now, I also found, noted with interest, that the state have actually come to us and are engaging with us meaningfully finally on the Hamilton Road project to enter into the Prince Charles Hospital. Now, this has been a long, a long and eventful project. We have been trying to engage with MetNorth, the MetNorth Hospital Zone, with Queensland Health, and with the Department of Transport Main Roads to try and get a partnership to make sure that this thing works for the best. Because a lot of the work, a lot of the beneficiaries of this particular project are employees of the hospital. And a lot of the prompting for the project was actually a motor vehicle fatality. And so we are really keen to make sure this works, but those entities did not engage with us meaningfully, but they are now. And I really appreciate that, and I'm very grateful for them to doing that. And our officers will be going and meeting with MetNorth Health about how we can make sure this project works better in the coming weeks. But one of the reasons that it didn't work is because retired councillor Hammond tried to recruit the state MP for Stafford, Jimmy Sullivan, on more than fifteen occasions to the cause of trying to get this done. And I thought, and I thought to myself, you've got to be part, you know, the state MPs to get the benefit for a hospital, and hospital and government employees really should be engaged. And I thought that perhaps we were the only ones who noticed. But I read in The Australian recently that Mr. Sullivan not only is facing a challenge from popular local LNP councillor Fiona Hammond, but Chooks now understands Sullivan is the only Labor incumbent being challenged for his pre-selection by Ms. Susan Lynch. That's in The Australian. So it's, it's now, it's now been noticed within Labor circles that Mr. Sullivan does not stick up for his community, goes missing, and is absent on matters of safety for state government employees. Clearly, they have noticed as well. And I, I see that Mr. Sullivan is under criticism from left and right by two strong female candidates. And I hope that we, that whatever the outcome is, we get the right outcome for Hamilton Road and for that Northside community, and the staff and patients of the Prince Charles Hospital. All right. So we heard last week about bridge maintenance and a range of, excuse me, I've just made so many notes about the whole, whole range of road projects in Northside, that last week's presentation was about, it was management of cross-border bridges, which of course is the, is one of the main things we do. Now, the problem that we have, and one of the problems we have in Brisbane, is each bridge is different and requires its own maintenance program. So the Story Bridge, which is actually the youngest of our bridges, is significantly different from, say, Victoria Bridge or Walter Taylor Bridge, and each of them requires their own maintenance schedule. Now, as part of that, when the new pedestrian bridges come online, they are actually similar in many ways and will be able to have their own distinct, they will not have their own distinct maintenance schedule, but rather they will have the same, will be able to keep costs down through maintenance and labor and planning costs, because the Kangaroo Point Bridge will be markedly similar to both Kuruipa Bridge, which I know is a state bridge, but also other bridges.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further speakers to the infrastructure report. Councillor Whitby?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to raise to, I guess, just put some more detail into my position on the petition for Whites, Preston, Manly Roads. I guess, the first petition, item B.
Thank you.
After, I've had a lot of conversations regarding this, these upgrades. There's, I've had conversations with the two schools, and I've been door-knocking the area quite substantially. And the conversations that I've had with council officers, I've been really clear that until there's been true consultation with the community, with the businesses, with the schools, I can't support any upgrade, because it's actually quite contentious on where people sit. The, the Lord Mayor's been in here before talking about what parking looks like around signals, and that would actually, that would actually seriously impact businesses and homes on those hills. We've got people that are on Whites Road that are genuinely concerned about Whites Road becoming even more of a rat run if there's signals at the top of the hill. It's, Whites Road is a part of an active school travel plan, there's, and it is currently listed for a pedestrian crossing just down from where the lights are proposed. So it's, it's a bit of a mess with how it is at the moment, and it needs a lot more thought than just a petition. It does need a much broader, much deeper consultation with the entire community. I've made that very clear with council officers. Unfortunately, when it comes to giving an opinion on a petition, it's either you support it or you don't. So at this stage, we will be abstaining from that until such time as there is extensive consultation with the broader Manly Roader community.
Thank you, councillor Whitby. Further speakers? Councillor Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I rise briefly to speak on item C, which is a petition calling on council to reduce the speed limit along the Brisbane Corso through Yorongra and Fairfield. Firstly, I'd like to start by saying that council's inaction on this issue has been quite appalling. The first request was made to council thirteen months ago, well over a year, for a speed limit review. That initial request follows an extensive community survey that I'd undertaken with residents who lived in Fairfield and Yorongra along the route. It took months to get even a basic reply from council officers, months, just to get a reply. We had to follow up repeatedly. Then they came back and said, no, they weren't going to do anything. So then in about March, I undertook a petition with the community, and hundreds and hundreds of residents signed that petition. That was tabled in June. Here we are now in November, thirteen months after the initial request, and council still has not finished the speed limit review, has not finished it. It's one of several outstanding speed limit review requests that I have, that this council has failed to action in a timely way. Now, before us today, Brisbane City Council are simply saying in this recommendation that they are doing a speed limit review. Well, they've been doing the speed limit review for months. Well, they've been doing the speed limit review for months and months and months. There does not seem to be any priority given to it. There does not seem to be any significance given to it. And that is despite the fact that an elderly woman died in this area that is 60 kilometers an hour when crossing the road about seven years ago. And about three years ago, there was an extremely serious cycling accident where a quite young woman, only about 40, ended up as a paraplegic. Has this council done anything down there to improve safety for drivers, pedestrians or cyclists? No, they haven't. It's on the River Loop and they still haven't prioritized it. Instead, they've prioritized councillor Adams' area over in Camp Hill. And having seen the files there, it was a matter of a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks to get that speed limit review process sorted. Council fell over backwards to get variable message signs for her. They bent over backwards to accommodate her social media needs. And it just shows that the LNP are only governing for themselves and they are not governing for the people of Brisbane. Now, having seen the Rolls Royce response that councillor Adams got in her area and waiting for 13 months or 12, more than a year in Tennyson Ward, I then went back to council's senior officer in this area and said to her, well, let's get a trial underway for this area while we're waiting for the speed limit review. And that came back a few years ago going, no, we're not doing that. That is not good enough. This council will jump for a marginal LNP seat holder, but when a councillor in another part of Brisbane asks for safety improvements where people have been killed and seriously injured, this council does nothing. Now, what is it the petitioners are asking for? Well, let's, let's put it this way. The Brisbane Corso at the Fairfield end is 40 kilometers an hour. That is an appropriate speed there because it is a very high pedestrian activity area as many people are walking up to the university and up to the cemetery. Then it becomes 50 through parts of Fairfield. Then it becomes 60 for a small section, about 500 or 600 meters, because that's the area where there are no houses and till it becomes 50 again in Yaronga. So we just want to get rid of the small 60 kilometer an hour section and make it 40 and 50. You would think that I've asked council to spend $100 million on something in my ward. No, we've asked for two signs to change from 60 kilometers an hour to 50 kilometers an hour. And 13 months later, this council has failed to action that request. There's no time sensitivity, there is no priority, there is no recognition of the deaths and the injuries. And yet, when it comes to supporting marginal LNP councillors, these council officers will jump as high as they can. I've seen the emails back and forth. Oh, yes, yes, we'll have those variable message signs here. Yes, yes, we'll have them uncovered by 10:45 so you can do your social media. 13 months, crickets. Multiple follows up by me, multiple requests to try and find a practical and timely solution, and there has not been one. The residents of Fairfield deserve better than what the LNP have to offer here. And they have a chance today to show that they will listen and act in the same way they do for their own constituents in Tennyson Ward. And I move the following amendment. Paragraph 33, recommendation, add the following paragraph to the response at attachment A, which will read as a new fourth paragraph. I move, pending the SLR outcome, council will undertake an immediate trial, including signage and VMS, to reduce the speed limit on the 60 kilometer section to 50 kilometers to improve safety on the Brisbane Corso.
Seconded.
Thank you. We have a motion for an amendment to attachment A, item C. Is that correct, councillor Johnson? Attachment A, we're amending? Draft response?
It's infrastructure, item C.
Yep.
Paragraph 33, the recommendation.
Yep, thank you. Pending the SLR outcome, council will undertake on an immediate trial, sorry, thank you, including signage and VMS to reduce the speed limit on the 60 kilometer section to the 50 kilometer section to improve safety on the Brisbane Corso. That's been moved by councillor Johnson, seconded by councillor Griffiths.
Look, it's, it's simply not good enough.
Councillor Johnson, just to the amendment?
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, that's my intention.
Yep, I just hadn't called you, that's all.
Thank, oh, thank you. It's simply not good enough, in my view, that it takes 13 months for council to respond to a simple request to change a very small section of road from 60 to 50 kilometers. This is clearly something that was strongly supported by local residents. 86% of the residents that I surveyed, all of those who live along this corridor, were supportive of reducing the speed. More than 50% of those were to 50 and around 30% were to 40. So there is a real push for recognition that this is an incredibly busy part of Brisbane. We have serious rat running, we have the River City Loop for cyclists, we've had deaths and injuries on the road. And it's just not good enough that council is failing to act in a timely way. We need to send a message to council that it's not just marginal LNP seat holders who can get road speed reduction trials in their areas. If it's good enough in the deputy mayor's area, then it's good enough in Tennyson Ward. We need to make sure that this council is acting in the best interests of the safety of residents. And in this case, they are simply not doing that. 13 months is a ridiculously long time to wait. And we get pushed back and ignored and no response from officers, and that is not good enough. This council needs to send a message today to make sure that there is a trial that is put in place while the speed limit review is underway. And that trial is a small section of Brisbane Corso going from 60 to 50 kilometers per hour. This is a tool and a technique that was recently used in the deputy mayor's ward. And I am simply looking for the same application in Tennyson Ward. Over there, of course, they bent over backwards to provide variable message signs with koalas on it for the deputy mayor. I don't need the koalas on the VMS, but I would like some warning signage to go up so people are aware of the changes to the speed limit. So I don't think it is good enough that after 13 months of waiting, Tennyson Ward residents in Fairfield and Yaronga are being let down by this council. This is a simple and practical amendment that will introduce a trial so that we can get better safety on the Brisbane Corso for pedestrians, cyclists and drivers. And we can make it much safer for residents who live in this area. I don't want to see another elderly person from the village killed while they're crossing the road on their morning walk. I don't want to see another cyclist seriously injured and become a paraplegic. It needs to have safety measures undertaken. Council is not proposing any. It is the community and I that are driving this. And it's not good enough that council is taking too long to respond. I urge all councillors to support this amendment that is a simple one. It is a trial. It is within council's capabilities and it is a tool that has been used in other parts of the city. So I urge all councillors to support this amendment before us today.
Thank you, councillors. Further speakers to the amendment? See no one rising. We will now put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Um, division?
Seconded.
Division called by councillor Johnson and councillor Griffiths. Eyes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Councillor Johnson? Councillor Johnson? So I was being a bit cheeky, mate. Clarks, please ring the results.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being six in favour and 17 against.
Councillors, the motion has not passed. Please return to your seats, councillors. Councillors, are the further speakers on the infrastructure report? I'm assuming nobody's standing? We'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
No, sorry.
Oh, sorry, sorry councillor Wines, my apologies. Write a reply. You do have a write a reply.
No, that's all right, thanks. So I just wanted to, just to finish off some of my comments from earlier. Council oversees a variety of cross river bridges and their designs, including the ones named earlier, but also William Jolly, Jack Pesch, Eleanor Chanel and Cola were all part of the system. Kangaroo Point Grand Bridge and the Breakfast Creek Bridge will also be joining those bridges as part of our maintenance program. Each bridge follows a 30-year maintenance plan tailored to its specific design with structural load ratings and maintenance manuals. Heredge conservation management plans are also in place for William Jolly, Walter Taylor and the Story Bridges. The presenter also gave us a breakdown of the benefits of full closures of the bridges during work. So rather than doing one lane or a single lane at a time, the benefit of the full closure to both the speed of the project, the cost of the project, but also it does actually provide a higher quality of work, fewer seams in the road, fewer opportunities for faults and failures in the road. And we know that the work will be able, the work should be able to last longer. When compared to the alternatives, it also includes increased safety for pedestrians as well to be able to do the whole thing. We also were shown a case study of the full bridge closure for William Jolly Bridge, which occurred in May of this year, which showcased the successful maintenance activities. The, just in response, so we will be considering the, the project that councillor Whitme was talking about in White's Preston, Manly Roads, Manly West and Gordon Parade, Ernest Street and Manly Road in Manly. Will all, this project, I believe, will be of material benefit for that particular community. We have, we have completed a range of designs for that, I believe. We have gone to community consultation. If we haven't gone, it is very soon. This project will, will, I think, materially benefit the Manly West and Manly community. And on the matter of the Brisbane Corso, the speed limit review is live right now. We're doing it as we speak and this council will respond and accept whatever recommendation comes from both the speed limit review process and the speed limit conclave. Because as councillors know, to have a speed limit reduction, there has to be, once the speed limit review is complete, then it is then passed off to a committee. And that committee is made up of a representative of Brisbane City Council, a representative of the Department of Transport and Sport Main Roads, and a representative of the Queensland Police Service, who all must agree on the new speed limit. At that point, we will change the speed limit if that is their recommendation.
Thank you councillor Wines. Okay, we will now put items. Councillor Johnson? We will now put items A and C. All those in favour of A and C say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. We will now put item B of the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Strunk and councillor Wines. Eyes to my right, noes to my left. Councillors, quiet please. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and six abstentions.
The item B of the report has passed. Councillors, please return to your seats. Councillor Allen, city planning, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 14th of November, 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 14th of November, 2023 be adopted. Councillor Allen, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Item A was a committee presentation on a residential subdivision at 95 Lemke Road, Tagam. This residential subdivision in Tagam is just over 10,000 square meters, configuring two existing lots into a total of 20 individual lots. Strategically positioned, this residential subdivision is a mere five-minute drive from both the Castledyne Train Station and the North Bundles Station. Such proximity makes city commuting a breeze, offering residents an easy and convenient transportation option. 95 Lemke Road is surrounded by amenities including shopping hubs, medical facilities and schools, creating a vibrant community for its future residents. The subdivision includes a brand-new access road, an easement and the completion of the existing section of the adjoining Tamarind Street. This thoughtful planning not only aligns with the existing development pattern, but also enhances the overall connectivity of the area. In terms of accessibility, connecting to surrounding roads is made effortless with the integration of existing streets Lemke Road and nearby recreation areas. 95 Lemke Road significantly contributes to the structural planning of the neighbourhood as it seamlessly integrates with the surrounding residential community in terms of density, lot size and dimensions. The lots within this subdivision range from 300 square meters to 582 square meters, offering a diverse range of housing topologies and construction methods for future residents to choose from. 95 Lemke Road plays a crucial role in increasing the supply of land, paving the way for more homes in Brisbane. This is another example of the Surrinna Council supporting the right mix of development in the right locations to support the needs of the growing city of Brisbane. In addition to the presentation, there were two petitions considered and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Allen. Are there any further speakers on the city planning report? Being no one standing, we'll now put the report. Pardon me, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Davis, Environment and Parks, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday, 14 November, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Wolf that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 14th of November, 2023 be adopted. Councillor Davis, you've got the call.
Point of order, Chair.
Pardon me, point of order councillor Strunk?
Yes, could, could, we ask that item B, C and D be made serially for voting purposes, please?
Is that B, C and D together or each?
Yep.
Yep, thank you. Councillor Davis, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Last week's committee presentation was an update on council's environmental offsets program. We're proud that it's home to more than 80 different ecosystems. Brisbane is the most biodiverse capital city in Australia and council is playing an active role in protecting our biodiversity. As I said earlier, we have set ourselves an ambitious target of 40% natural habitat cover on mainland Brisbane by 2031 and we are really close at 38.9% coverage. In fact, if we included Moreton Bay, rather Moreton Island, we would easily exceed that target. The environmental offsets program is just one of the initiatives that we have to help us to meet that ambitious target. Mr Chair, the first environmental offsets project we undertook was the Legacy Way. Mr Chair, the first environmental offsets project we undertook was the Legacy Way Offsets Project, which commenced in 2011 with the purchase of 30 hectares of former farmland next to Anstead Bushland Reserve. Since then, we have now delivered and established almost 400 hectares of native vegetation and habitat at 61 sites across the city, representing more than 420,000 native plants established. Not only do we focus on planting three, not only do we focus on planting three hectares of offsets for every one hectare of vegetation that is impacted by infrastructure or development, we also work to recycle vegetation and natural material that is removed as part of these projects. For example, where a road widening project has to have, see the removal of a tree, we can mulch the tree and the offsets team will use that mulch in a local project of their own. We can also use rocks, logs and branches to create new ground habitat that would usually take many years to naturally develop. This is not only very economical, but also logistically and environmentally sound practice. With so many different ecosystems, there's a lot of potential for variety in the offsets projects we deliver. At Bolimba Creek, for example, we're working with the Macadamia Conservation Trust to incorporate wild macadamia trees into our projects across the corridor. Overall, this remains a very commendable program and yet another example of where our council has demonstrated real leadership in conservation and environmental management. We were one of the first local governments to embrace this kind of offsets work, Mr Chair, certainly at this scale. And we now have enough land under restoration to keep the project going until at least 2031. Mr Chair, for the record, we also had a number of petitions and the committee endorsed expenditure from the Suburban Enhancement Fund approving installation of a scooter track at Cockatoo Place Park, Broochdale. Then I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Davis. Further speakers to the report?
Yes, thanks, Mr Chair. And I just rise to speak to item D in particular, which is two eight four Pine Mountains Road. And the petitioners there, and there were hundreds of them, wanted that particular bushland or that site purchased so that we could, through the Bushland Acquisition Fund. Many, many residents have contacted me in relation to this. It's, it's a natural corridor that, that is existing, currently existing, that connects very busy, connects bushland across a very busy road there. And there's been, as we could see in last week's report, there's been a number of wildlife strikes and particular koala strikes on Pine Mountains Road, as well as the other side of the park over at Boundary Road. So the, the administration's response here is very disappointing. And it continues to be disappointing because residents can't see and can't understand how decisions are made to purchase bushland. We keep hearing the language that, that we're, you know, we're, we're green, we greenwash a lot of things. We make out that we're very interested in bushland, but when it comes to using the bushland funds to purchase bushland, we know that only 19%, only 19% of bushland money is actually used to, to purchase bushland in Brisbane. When I tell that to groups and when I tell to residents, they're shocked. They're duped, they feel duped because in their mind, all that money is being used to purchase and preserve bushland across the city. And that was the case here, where the local councillor here, councillor Adams, didn't, residents approached her and she didn't want to do anything. She didn't want to take this issue up. She didn't want to take it forward. And now, once again, she's not in the chamber. And so residents approached me and yes, we put the petition together and they have signed it in their hundreds. And they are very supportive of it and it's a logical thing to do, to have this corridor connecting one area of bushland with another. It's a really logical thing to do. It was something you can't really argue against. LNP, don't do logic, no. And so the response is no, we're not going to do this. And I think what it goes back to is the use of this bushland money. We're saying this bushland money should be used for protecting bushland, for creating corridors, for buying banks of bushland. We're saying that, but we can't see the plan for that. You can't see the action in that. You can't see the transparency for how that's going to happen. It's a very hit and miss process. So I think this just highlights again that it is a hit and miss process, that it isn't working. And really residents are just being duped with this whole, the whole way bushland is being used in the city. And I know Tracy, Tracy Price has committed to spending the bushland preservation money on buying bushland. Now, she's actually made that a promise. So that's certainly a black and white, this is what the LNP will do, this is what Labor will do. In terms of, I just check with the chairperson. There was an issue I had raised at the last meeting around the number of habitat groups set up in the last year. If, if councillor Davis has a response to that, that would be really good to know. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you councillor Griffiths. Further speakers? Councillor Davis, write a reply.
Well, thank you very much, Mr Chair. And my apologies councillor Griffiths, the answer to your question is, is two. And that's the Tarragindi Conservation Park Bushland, Bush Care Group and the De Soto Place Bush Care Group, my apologies. Mr Chair, it was disappointing to have councillor Griffiths once again stand up and misrepresent the bushland acquisition program and the bushland preservation levy. The reason why there is some confusion in the community about the bushland acquisition fund is because the Labor Party continue to peddle that it is, the bushland preservation levy is in fact the bushland acquisition fund. So just once again, can I remind the chamber what the bushland preservation levy money goes towards? It goes towards bushland acquisition. It goes towards Brisbane invasive species management. It goes towards the wipeout weeds program. It goes towards community conservation partnerships. It goes towards community conservation assistance. It goes towards conservation reserves management program. It goes towards the Oxley Creek transformation. And it also goes towards paying back the accelerated bushland acquisition program. All money that is, is put aside for bushland acquisition as part of the bushland preservation levy goes towards bushland acquisition. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you councillor Davis. We will now put item A of the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. We will now put items B, C and D together. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Councillor Johnson's still on her seat, so I'm not sure. Yes, councillor Johnson's still on her seat. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being fifteen in favour and six against.
Thank you. The report has passed. Councillors, please return to your seats. Councillor Marks, City Standards Committee, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the fourteenth of November, twenty twenty-three be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Adaman that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the fourteenth of November, twenty twenty-three be adopted. Councillor Marks, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before I get to the committee presentation that we had last week on CAT management, I just want to address the chamber on a few, well, one item in particular. And this is the item that goes back to the very first question I was ever asked when I was mayor of chair back in 2020. And it's about the mosquitoes and the management of the mosquitoes and the mosquito team and the people that work very hard in that space. And the continued fur fees that are put out there about the fact that, A, we've cut the mosquito spraying program, which is completely false and completely misleading to the chamber and also the greater, the wider public. The, the answer and the question around mosquito spraying has always been the same. It's never changed from when I answered it originally back in 2020. The Lord Mayor has always said that when we are told to spray by the medical entomologists, who are the experts in this field, then we spray. It has nothing, no bearing whatsoever on any budget or anything like that. It's all purely scientific. Now, it's not just about the tides, it's also about the larvae. So recently, there was a high tide that did come through the area and it actually peaked slightly higher. It was predicted to come through at 2:49 on Monday, the thirtieth of October. It actually peaked and came a little bit later on the thirty first of October and slightly higher. Now, along with the tide, what happens is the officers go out to those areas and they check the hatching. Now, basically, for those people who don't understand, and I can see that councillor through you, Mr Chair, the opposition leader is completely uninterested in this answer because he wants to continue to spread this nonsense out in the community. The officers go out there and they check the larvae per dip. That, after that particular high tide, there was less than five larvae per dip. Now, a big hatch that's widespread would have over 100 per dip. So this is a scientific thing that comes not only from the, the weather events, but also the actual larvae that's happening. Now, I want to also just let the chamber know and those council, council wards across the north side particularly, which have this, the bigger issue in this space, will and always do get an email notification of when things are happening. So just to clarify, there will be Brackenridge, Deegan, Northgate, Hamilton, Wintermanly and Doboy. So just to clarify that the, we have had recently 30, 30 millimetres plus of rain experienced. And so the entomologists, as always, have gone out to those hatching things, to places, those locations that we monitor. And they have seen that there is a salt marsh mosquito hatch is now occurring. So with that in mind, they have a planned aerial spray for Thursday. The helicopter has been booked and it will take place on Thursday. We actually put out a community service announcement to all the residents, but through you, Mr Chair, if Mr, the leader of the opposition would like to now go to social media, I'm sure he'll take credit and say that he organised for the helicopter to do aerial spraying. Look, you know, basically, I don't care if he does that or not. It doesn't bother me. He can take all the credit he likes. I take the credit with Martin where credit's due. And I know through you, Mr Chair, the leader of the opposition consistently talks about how he's spoken to officers and they say this, that and the next thing. Well, I can tell you, Mr Chair, I also speak to the officers and the managers in there. Quite frankly, they are really sick and tired and over the nonsense that keeps being spouted about them and the way they do their job. I just want to say again, Martin and your team out there, you do a fabulous job and we will always continue to support you. I also want to make congratulations through to the winner, winners, sorry, of the Waste Smart Awards that we had here in City Hall just recently. We had a number of councillors attending. I know councillor Johnston was there. Councillor Davis was there. Councillor Toomey was there, councillor Landers and on, and councillor, no, councillor Waddens wasn't there and councillor Jenkinson. So yes, actually, one of councillor Adams, through you, Mr Chair, her, one of her people was working with the Queensland Children's Hospital and actually won the councillor's choice award. She does amazing work. Her name's Renee and she does some pretty amazing work. But the winners were from all over the place and they really congratulate them all and particularly the younger generation because they're the ones that are coming up after us, that we need them to be really involved and keen in this space and coming up with all these great ideas. And we also, just to finish on that note, we had a presentation on CAT management and I'm happy to leave any debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Marks. Further speakers? See no one rising. We'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard, Community Arts and Nighttime Economy, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the fourteenth of November, twenty twenty-three be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Wolf that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the fourteenth of November, twenty twenty-three be adopted. Councillor Howard, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And as I would normally tell you, all of the amazing things that have been happening around Brisbane, I think that we've heard quite a lot through, through today. And of course, our presentation last week was about what's on for Christmas and December. So I think I will just leave debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Howard. Are there any further speakers on the nighttime economy? No, I see no one rising. We will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance, please.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the fourteenth of November, twenty twenty-three be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Wong that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the fourteenth of November, twenty twenty-three be adopted. Nothing councillor Cunningham? No. Any further speakers? No. We'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, draw your attention to the notice of motion, item six on the agenda. Councillor Johnson, would you please move your motion?
Thank you. I move that Brisbane City Council reestablishes a flood buyback scheme as part of the 2024-25 council budget to provide ongoing flood buyback following the conclusion of the state federal government scheme in 2023.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Griffiths that Brisbane City Council reestablishes a flood buyback scheme as part of the 24-25 council budget to provide ongoing flood buyback following the conclusion of the state and federal government's scheme in 2023. Councillor Johnson, you've got the call.
Yes, thank you. I know there are quite a few new councillors here and for their benefit, I'll just say, following the 2011 floods, council established a buyback scheme. That buyback scheme bought a huge number of houses in really flood prone parts of the city, including, for example, the area of Rock Lee and Sherwood that I represented at that time. In 2016, the scheme was cut and defunded by council. And there has been no buyback scheme available in Brisbane for residents since then. All my requests to the CEO for buyback, where residents in highly flood prone areas have come forward saying they would like to sell their homes post 2011, have been refused by council. Every single one of them. Now, of course, in 2022, another significant flood hit the city. And yet again, about 3,000 houses in Tennyson Ward were flooded. That's the same size pretty much as Lismore. So the same amount of houses in the whole city of Lismore, that's about the number of houses that flooded in Tennyson Ward. The state government has come to the party, along with the federal government, and provided $741 million in disaster funding for a range of flood resilient measures. And that includes buyback across a number of significantly flooded areas right throughout Queensland. That does, of course, include Tennyson Ward and I'm sure councillor Griffiths will talk about the impacts on his ward. It also includes a number of councillors on the opposite side of the chamber, including councillor Wolf, because she definitely has a number of flooded areas in her part of the world. And certainly there are other councillors, councillor Cunningham and, and more, I'm sure. It is appalling to me that our attempts in previous years have been refused by the LNP. It is essential that council has a scheme that responds to natural disasters. And flooding is one of those really significant events that impacts on the city. Council is the development authority when it comes to planning in the city. It's council's planning scheme that has allowed development to happen in known flood areas. Council has allowed the subdivision. It has approved the houses and the units and it has put people in harm's way. So council, in my view, has a responsibility to establish a fair buyback scheme that can operate outside of the ongoing disaster arrangements. So that when people are ready to leave their homes, whether that's they sell or they move into retirement or a nursing home, that one of the first options that comes to mind is offering these severely flooded home back to council for buyback. This doesn't have to be a huge amount of money. I think it used to be around $5 million a year, councillor Griffiths, from memory. And we would just quietly buy back, you know, half a dozen to a dozen homes every year. It is essential because in my ward, we've had about 60 confirmed buyback properties out of 3,000. And there are probably another 20 or 30 that are either awaiting settlement and/or under review by the state government through the appeals process. But only a tiny drop in the bucket of houses left, sorry, have been bought back. And in streets where buyback has occurred, there are now one or two houses and then a gap. One or two houses and then a gap. And we have a number of households who, for a whole range of reasons, the water was 10 centimetres below the threshold for buyback. They wanted to raise and stay. For a whole range of reasons, these houses have not been bought back. We need to have an ongoing scheme so that if in future these homeowners want to leave and sell their homes, they're not sold to unsuspecting buyers who will find out the hard way when it floods again. Now, I know that floodwise maps are available. I tell people this in my welcome to the ward letter. But unfortunately, a lot of people make decisions about a property on emotion rather than looking at all the technical details. But council has an obligation here. Council approved the subdivision of these schemes. Council approved the houses to be built on these properties. And we now have a responsibility to ensure that there is a buyback option available for people in the worst flooded areas. Council's replacement scheme, which was the flood resilient homes project, was only ever available in three suburbs, or four maybe. Anala, Paddington. And again, my requests for Tennyson Ward residents to participate in this scheme were all refused, all of them. So now the federal disaster funding being delivered through the state has finished, there is no help for residents who may be living in an area where the house should be bought back. It's the right decision and the long term decision that should be made. So I know this is an issue that councillor Griffiths has moved motions on here before and I've been happy to support them. We wanted to give it one more try because we represent areas where we have residents who are still in distress following the 2022 floods. I have residents who've had a house bought back next door to them. Their house is the same height and they've not been eligible. We need to know that council will play its role in buying back homes over the next X number of years. And funding should be set aside to deliver buyback in a very quiet way when those properties come forward. That's how the scheme used to work and it worked well. So I encourage all councillors, particularly those who have residents who flood, to make sure that there is a buyback scheme available through council. And before the LNP get up like they did last time and say this is all a state and federal issue, it absolutely is not. They do help when it comes to natural disasters. But again, council is the town planning decision maker. Council approved these developments. Council approved the subdivisions. Council filled out in Oxley around Logan Avenue. I'm told by those residents that the fill from King George Square car park went out and that's what filled that area out at Logan Avenue off Oxley Road that floods so badly. So council's own practices have contributed to the building of houses in areas that are not suitable for, for, for homes, like on the banks of Oxley Creek. So this is the right thing to do. It was a scheme that council had in place more than a decade ago. It worked well. And now that the state and federal disaster funds have closed, it is essential that council reestablishes its fund in the upcoming budget so that there are options to buy back some homes in the worst flood affected areas. So I encourage all councillors to support the motion.
Thank you, councillor Johnston. Are there further speakers? Councillor Wolf.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on this motion also. It was before my time, Mr Chair, but I'm told this motion of councillor Johnston is nearly identical to the one moved by councillor Griffiths earlier this year. Paul De Jersey reviewed council's response to the flood and one of his recommendations was to reinstate our successful voluntary home purchase scheme, subject to the availability of state and federal funding. And that is what council has done and will continue to do. We always knew that Mr De Jersey also knew that the scale of the 2020 flood meant council could simply not afford to deliver this programme on its own. The flood was affected, the flood affected 23,000 homes and the damage bill was enormous. The cost of recovery to council alone was more than $300 million. So the Lord Mayor advocated for more funding to be made available under the Disaster Recovery Funding Arrangements for Buybacks of Flood Affective Properties in Brisbane. The Lord Mayor's advocacy resulted in $741 million of state and federal funding, which became the Resilient Homes Fund. It should also be acknowledged that two of our Brisbane federal MPs, Trevor Evans and Julian Simmons, played a big role in convincing the federal government to support the Lord Mayor's programme. Thanks to his advocacy, right now, we are delivering the biggest buyback programme Brisbane has ever seen. We have 389 properties that have been identified for buyback in just over 12 months. And the programme is well advanced with 216 properties now fully acquired by council and demolitions and removals well underway. As councillor Johnson would know, Mr Chair, 168 of these properties are in Tennyson Ward and 111 are in the Maruka Ward. Together, that is 71% of all buybacks in Brisbane. To put this into perspective, under the previous VHPS, 112 properties were acquired over 10 years. Unlike the previous programme, the current programme has been open to anyone who was flood impacted to have their property assessed for buyback, raised, retrofitted for more than 12 months before the scheme closed to new applications. But the scheme hasn't been cancelled. It will continue for several years to come. Those who have already registered for their interest are still being assessed by the QRA. And we will be to, and we are told by the QRA that the interest in voluntary buyback has started to decline over the recent months, which is to be expected because buybacks of the family home is an absolute last resort. And many have decided to opt for assistance with retrofitting and raising of their homes instead. It is important to remember that this is strictly a voluntary scheme. Some homeowners have indicated interest early on, but when it came to the time to sign a contract, they opted to remain in their properties and that's okay. So the idea that there are thousands of residents crying out to have their homes demolished is simply not true. Is councillor Johnston suggesting that they are resumed because they have chosen to embrace our waterfront lifestyle, acknowledging that sometimes that comes with flood risk? Meanwhile, voluntarily acquiring nearly 400 residential properties and converting them into green space is a big job and it is one we are proud to be delivering. The current programme alone will cost at least $250 million. And with the council, along with every other level of government and every household in Brisbane facing unprecedented cost pressures, it seems that councillor Johnston is suggesting we should be finding another $250 million every year for a programme to demolish hundreds of residential properties in the middle of a housing crisis. Which brings me to my point, Mr Chair.
Just one moment, councillor Wolf.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted. Thank you. Councillor Wolf.
This motion is really a budget bid. And as councillor Johnston knows, there is a process for making submissions when the budget is developed in the next financial year. So while this administration continues to deliver the buyback programme, I move that this motion be laid on the table for consideration in the 2024/25 budget.
Seconded.
We have councillors, we have a procedural motion to lay this motion on the tape. On the table. Councillor Johnson. Councillor Johnson, I consider that you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct and in accordance with section 21/4 of the Meetings Local Law 2001, I hereby request that you refrain from calling out across the chamber. We are on a procedural motion. There is no debate. All those in favour of laying this motion on the table say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Seconded.
Division called by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Griffiths, ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 16 in favour and 6 against.
The procedural motion has passed. Councillors, please return to your seats. Councillors, we move, oh, sorry, councillor Johnson. You're on a point of order?
Misrepresentation.
You, you'll have to deal with that when the motion comes back off the table.
No, I won't. That's not how it works. I've been misrepresented by councillor Wolf and I am under the rules seeking the right to correct that misrepresentation.
That's, that's okay. You, that, fine, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, in her pre-prepared speech, councillor Wolf made a number of statements that were obviously factually incorrect. She said I claimed that thousands of houses were going to be bought back and that there'd be $250 million contributed to the fund. In fact, I said it would be a very small project and quoted a figure of around $5 million. So councillor Wolf, it's very disappointing in one of her first speeches she gets up.
Councillor, hang on, hang on.
These are to be made succinctly.
Just, just one moment, councillor Murphy.
And makes false statements.
No, councillor Johnson, that's inappropriate. That is not your misrepresentation. Councillors, councillor Howard. That is inappropriate, councillor Johnson. Councillor Johnson. Councillor Johnson. There's a certain amount of hypocrisy that comes with that statement.
Yes, from councillor Wolf and yourself.
Councillor Johnson. I will move on to the next item, petitions. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Murphy.
Chair, I have a petition to provide no parking zones on either side of Ave Parkside, Carandels' main entrance.
Thank you. Are there any other petitions? Councillor Hutton.
Mr Chair, I move that the petition as presented be received and referred to the committee concern for consideration and report.
Seconded.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Strunk. Thank you, councillor Hutton. It's been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Strunk that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concern for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, general business. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of the Office of the Independent Assessor or councillor Ethics Committee order? No, I see no one rising. Councillors, are there any items of general business? Councillor Perry. Councillor Perry's making her maiden speech, councillors. So as is custom. Councillor Johnson. As is custom in this place, all councillors' maiden speeches will be heard in silence. Councillor Perry.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. It is with immense pride that I stand here today. The privilege of being in this historic place, representing the interests of the residents of Marchant Ward, is not one that I take lightly. Thirty odd years ago, my great grandmother would often bring me here to City Hall to enjoy the many free events that were held at the time. I think a lot about my nan today. A woman who lived through the Great Depression, World War II, was widowed with two young children and then went on to help raise her grandchildren and great grandchildren. Her tales of our city, travelling into town as a young woman on the back of a truck when peace was declared. Walking the hills of Pad and two to the valley on the tram. The Fitzgerald Inquiry, Cloudland, Expo 88 and Sammy Davis Junior at Festival Hall, when a packed audience was so entranced, you could hear a pin drop. You see, to me, my dear old nan was synonymous with Brisbane. Indeed, she was a bit like the grand old dame we're in today. Strong, proud and a true matriarch of the city. But as I think of her today, I'm mindful that nan never had the opportunities that I had to go to high school or pursue higher education. Indeed, this place at the time was no place for her. Luckily for me, I'm a millennial woman, or a geriatric millennial, as I've been harshly told by a few people lately. A daughter of the 90s who was fluent in girl power and learnt via bumper stickers that women can do anything. A woman who has been encouraged to pursue education, be aspirational and to give back. As soon as I was old enough to work, I got a job. I was the first person in my family to graduate from university. I worked hard and I saved up and I bought my first home in my twenties. And I pursued a successful career while balancing the demands of motherhood. Now, to me, these achievements are pretty run of the mill. But for a young girl who was raised by a single mum in a public housing, in a public housing unit in Dutton Park, these milestones for me sometimes felt insurmountable. It was certainly never on the cards that would ever be in here, in this place, addressing you. So it would be remiss of me if I didn't use this privilege and this opportunity to make the lives of people in my community better. In honour of my nan, who's now at Luckwitch Cemetery, forever a resident of Marchant Ward, and all the women who went before me, who held out their hands, shared their wisdom and helped to make me better. Councillor Fiona Hammond dedicated 15 years of her life to the residents of Marchant Ward. And regardless of what side of the chamber you're on, this is an incredible achievement and a true act of service. Everyone in my community knows Fiona and I want to thank her for her tireless advocacy for Marchant and wish her all the best for her next adventure. Now, when you look at Marchant Ward on a map, one thing that may strike you is that it's a bit of a hodgepodge of suburbs. A sprinkling of Albion, Windsor and Wooloween, a dollop of Grange, Stafford and Stafford Heights, lashings of Luckwitch, Gordon Park, Chermside and Chermside West and a sliver of Gibung and Aspley. Each suburb has its own identity, its own challenges and its own opportunities. But one thing they all have in common is that they are adjusting to the incredible amount of growth Brisbane and its northern neighbours have seen in the last few years. This growth is not unique to the north side, but the north side suburbs are feeling it most intensely. Increased traffic congestion is an issue firmly on people's minds. If anyone here has been anywhere near Gimpy Road on any day of the week, any time of the day, you'll understand what I'm on about. The frustration and the agitation is palpable. I'm heartened to see some progress on the Gimpy Road bypass tunnel. It's the first step in helping to solve local traffic congestion and improving the livability of our community. But we must see more, like the expansion of the Brisbane Metro all the way to Chermside. Marchant residents can be confident that I'll fight for more, for them and for our future. be confident that I'll fight for more, for them and for our future. The north side's growth has also seen the movement of more families and younger people into the area, which makes more sense, which makes a lot of sense because Marchant Ward is about, is home to about 15 schools and kindies and some of the city's most popular recreational spaces. I'll continue to work hard to enhance these spaces and listen to the needs of our community. With two little ones, I should probably declare my conflict here. Every weekend is spent on a sporting field at a park, in a library or a swimming pool, alongside hundreds of other mums, dads and carers and their kids doing the same. So I've got skin in the game when it comes to improving Marchant's livability and accessibility. Growth needn't be a dirty word. With an administration that has a vision for our city, brings new ideas to the table and is willing to share and work together on these ideas with all levels of government, Brisbane residents can be confident that they are in safe hands with the Shrinna Council team. I'm proud to be working with a team that is delivering sensible policy, driving outcomes for ratepayers and standing strong as stewards for the future of our city. Marchant Ward is my home. It's where my husband and I have chosen to live and raise our family. It's where my boys go to daycare and kindies or go to school. It's where our footy clubs are, our bush care group, our favourite cafes and our watering holes. I've seen this community grow and change over the last decade and I see it as my duty as the local councillor, the conduit to the level of government which affects people's day-to-day lives at its most hands-on, to ensure it keeps pace and changes in only the ways which will enhance its vibrancy and vitality. My vision for the future is for an even better Marchant, a thriving suburban hub seamlessly connected to the CBD and Greater Brisbane, safe and engaging for families and prosperous for small business. As Marchant's voice in this place, I'll work tirelessly for residents to ensure that this vision is realised. Now, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank a few people. Firstly, to the encouragers. Nelson, Anna, Amy, Tim, Jules and JP. You said she could and so she did, but she couldn't have done it without your words of encouragement, guidance and friendship. Thank you for showing up for me time and again. Thank you for the examples you set. Thank you for your belief in me. Secondly, to the backers. Georgie Fee, Gem, Letty, Mary G, Just and the Fab Kebab Book Club. Thank you for continuing to fill my cup, pump me up and most importantly for the memes. I also must mention all the incredible women in my cohort of the Pathways to Politics program. Councillor Wolf to my right, councillor Dixon was a previous year and to Vicky, Rachel and Madonna in particular. Can I implore everybody here, if you know a woman who's flirting with the idea of getting into politics, encourage her to do this course. It could change her life. To all of the wonderful party members, to David, Nicole, to Diane, to Trev, to Dan, to everybody that helped me, thank you. We have such a great community at a local grassroots level. To my family, my village, Mum, Shona, Danny, Grandma, Kev, Kerry, Doug, Alicia, Kel, Hayden, Tanya, Ian, Jay, Stace, Ruby and Taylor, Marty and Jamila and the whole gang, thank you, I love you. And to the guy who's always pointing out the upside. He's like, that's okay. Teaching me to be comfortable in the uncomfortable and to never, ever take myself too seriously. My husband, Gav, you are more than I could have ever hoped to earn a partner and a father to our boys. So thank you. And finally, to Milo and Chippy, you are everything to me, my greatest achievement and my driving force. I can only hope to make you proud as I work to make this great city even better for the future. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Perry. Are there any further items of general business? Councillor Johnson.
Yes, thank you. I just rise to speak briefly on the motion that's been blocked by the LMP tonight and flood recovery. There is one more council meeting left for the year and that's next week. Otherwise, we go to an election on 16th of March. And the sad part about what the LMP have done here this evening is they've put a brand-new councillor who's been here in the chamber for about two or three weeks up to read a pre-prepared speech containing just completely outlandish and false statements. The really, really sad part about it is again, these women are reading out material that's been written by somebody else that is designed to hurt their own residents as well as other residents in Brisbane. Now councillor Penny Wolf has a huge number of areas in her ward that flood, particularly through parts of St Lucia and Indrapilly. And I suspect there are a number of residents just like in my ward who would have liked to have buyback but were unable to secure funding through the Queensland Resilient Homes Fund, through the QRA. And it is incredibly disappointing that she has decided to stand up here today and read out a pre-prepared speech praising politicians who lost their seats, who lost their seats at the federal election, instead of representing her residents or mine. And I know she likes to come over into Tennyson Ward. I thought councillor Wine's speech earlier today about, I don't know, some, some ALP candidate on the north side was very entertaining. Councillor Wolf thinks the jacarandas all grow on the south side of the river. And for her very first social media post, she popped over to Chelma to tell everybody how great the jacarandas were in Walter Tailaward. Well councillor Wolf, through you, Mr Chairman, these are the moments that people will remember. I will remember that you read out somebody else's pre-prepared words, you clearly heard what I said, and yet you sprouted things that were so obviously false and misleading and so obviously not like-
Councillor Johnson.
Yes.
Just remember that your comments need to go through the chair.
Yes, they have.
No, they, they, currently they're not.
They were, thank you, Mr Chair.
Yes, that's right, they were, they're not now.
Yes, thank you. Well, through you, Mr Chairman, as I've said, those statements were completely false. They were outlandish. They bared no resemblance to anything that I said in this chamber whatsoever. And they were said by someone who's been here for three weeks, who has no idea about the previous scheme that council ran, no idea of the hardship that residents in my ward have faced in 2011 or 2022, not even giving councillor Griffiths the opportunity to speak on the motion that he seconded. So standing up and blocking a legitimate motion in this place for party political purposes. That's what happened here this evening. Now, it's my understanding that motions in one council can't come back onto the agenda in another council. And I suspect that councillor Wolf doesn't know this, but this means this motion won't be debated at all. And I will be making that clear to all of the residents I know on her side of the river, to all of the candidates who are running against her. If this is the way in which councillor Wolf wants to go about this role here, I urge you to rethink it. Because standing up and saying I've done certain things in my speech when two minutes before you listened to what I said and you can't even distinguish whatever was written for you is not what was said in the chamber, that does not bode well for good government in this city. So I urge you, as I did when you started a few weeks ago, not just to take the shovel of rubbish that comes down the LMP food chain, to exercise some independent judgment and think about what's best for this city. Because this city needs a flood buyback scheme that is here for residents who by council's own planning mistakes have allowed subdivisions and have allowed homes to be built in areas that are catastrophically flood-prone. I am appalled at what was said here. I am appalled that councillor Griffiths wasn't given the opportunity to speak about this here today. And I urge councillor Wolf to reflect on what she's done and not do it again.
Further items of general business? See no one rising. We will move, just give me one second. Councillor Hutton, motion for six o'clock, please. No? No, okay. No, okay, we'll move on.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Mr Chairman, we've been told repeatedly that there is a statutory obligation for the council offices to have a break and that is why it has to be done. And Mr Chair, if it is, if it is a flexible rule, that is not what we've been told over and over again. So perhaps you can explain why it's not required this evening.
Don't uphold your point of order.
Point of order. Under discussion with the opposition, this motion is the only thing left on the agenda and we think it's best to just get through the motion and it should not take very long.
Thank you, deputy mayor. So we'll go to the joan motion to the, that's in the end of the meeting. Just let me grab some. Thank you. So the motion is that Brisbane City Council councillors unequivocally support the Winham Fringe Pride Parade and wholeheartedly condemn the homophobic and transphobic beliefs that are currently being spread by a minority of council, of minority within the community, my apologies. It was moved by councillor Whitme and seconded by councillor Cassidy. And I believe from memory councillor Whitme was, yes, you're in your opening remarks, just barely started, barely started. So you've got the call councillor Whitme.
Thank you, thank you Chair. I don't think I need to speak for long on this. I think it, I think most of this goes without saying. I do want to start off by acknowledging councillor Atwood for having the counsel, the courage in her convictions and taking a stand in support of Tom Oliver and Bay Pride. Absolutely amazing to see that this is, this is a bipartisan not okay. We can all take a stand on this one. The flyers that are getting out, that are getting handed out grossly misrepresent Bay Pride, grossly misrepresents what the sponsors are supporting. There is currently getting legal advice, legal advice is currently being sought and the police are investigating criminal charges for the people that created it. I'm not asking for people to call anyone specifically out. I'm not asking for anyone to, to go above and beyond the fact that councillors, councillors in this room present a united front when it comes to homophobia and bigotry. And we all just, it's, it's got no place in Brisbane. We all know that. As we heard in a commit, Lifestyle Committee today with councillor Howard, that Brisbane does take a stand when it comes to pride, when it comes to our LGBTQIA+ community. It is just something that we can all get behind. And I think I can leave my remarks there.
Thank you councillor Whitme. Further speakers, councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise in support of this motion and of course, all the councillors in this chamber do not support homophobia. I have spoken about the Winham Fringe Festival in the past. We all support Tom Oliver and the amazing work that he has done to put Winham on the map. And so we are happy to support this and I move that the motion be put.
Seconded.
We have a motion, procedural motion before us, moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Hutton, that this motion be put. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes.
Division.
No seconda. The ayes have it. Councillor Whitme, you have a right of reply.
Yeah, thank you. I do think it is a little bit disappointing to put the motion because it is something that I do know that there's a few councillors on this side that would have liked to have spoken out in support and have their, their thoughts on the record. And I'm sure there are people on the other side of the chamber that would also like to have their voices heard. I do, I think it's absolutely fantastic though that we can all get behind this particular motion, get behind Fringe. And once again, I invite everybody in this room down to Winham on Sunday to stand with us as we march on from the Winham jetty down to Winham Fringe at George Clayton Park at midday Sunday. Come down, wear whatever you like. Just come, have fun to this very, very, very friendly, friendly event. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. We'll now put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, that being no further business, I declare the meeting closed.